Welcome to the October 29th, 2024, Meeting of the Planning Board. First, we'll take a roll call to introduce board members and staff. Sean Weller.
Here.
Kate Ne.
Here.
Josh Ames.
Here.
I'm Ellen Rawlings, and I'm here as well. We also are joined by Elijah Romulus, our Town Planner, Amanda Wolf, our Housing and Land Use Planner, Jess Cole, our Recording Secretary, and Jack Hatfield from Westwood Media Center. This meeting is recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 6 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Westwood Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the Planning Board Meeting Notice that is posted to the Calendar section of the town's webpage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot Town Hall dot Westwood dot MA dot US forward slash. We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members received the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing and will restate the instructions. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and second has been made, the chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. Oh, and we are now, we are joined by Phil Giordano. Hi, Phil.
Hello, I'm here. Sorry, I'm late.
No worries at all. Glad to have you. All right, so we do have the full board. Before we invite the select board in, oh, and we're also joined by Nora Lockning, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Good evening, Nora.
Good evening.
So Elijah, before I invite the select board in, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
No changes to the agenda.
All right, then at this time, I'd like to invite the select board to join us and they can call their meeting to work.
And just a note tonight, I'm noticing it freezes every time someone gets promoted to panelist, so I would say avoid doing it. I'll just stick to it to avoid any technical issues.
Thank you.
Looking for, oh, there she is.
It looks like we have everybody. Terrific. Ellen, may I proceed in a...
Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's great to see all of you. Mary Ann, would you care to make a motion, please?
I hereby move that we open the Select Board meeting.
Is there a second?
We can't hear you, Rob. You're not muted, but we also can't hear you.
Say it one more time, Rob, and I'll let the record show I read your lips. Oh, you can't cover them, man.
You hear me now? Still no?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for the second, Rob. Roll call. Mary Ann?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. The Select Board meeting is hereby convened. Thank you so much, Ellen.
Welcome. Glad to have you here. All right, with that, we will proceed with Agenda Item Number One, which is 637 High Street. Continuation of a public hearing for the consideration of environmental impact and design review approval, EIDR, for proposed new fire station one at 637 High Street. This was continued from October 15th, 2024. It looks like I see a couple folks from the working groups slash design team. Oh, looks like you have a few more people to bring in.
There's quite, it's a big team, so give me a minute.
Sure thing.
All right, if I'm missing anyone, raise your hand and I'll follow you up, but I think I got everybody.
Could you bring over Officer Frank Baker?
Um, I don't even see him on the list.
He's there.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you.
Man, if you have a Hannah Shore in the list, she's on the team as well.
All right. Ben Jason?
Yes. Yep.
Well, on behalf of the Westwood Select Board, thank you so much for the opportunity. How are we looking? Do we... Amanda, do we have everyone pulled in that you'd like?
I think so.
Okay, terrific. So thank you so much from the Westwood Select Board. We very much appreciate your patience with this endeavor, and I'm going to turn this over to Dawn, I believe, or is Chip who's going to lead off on this?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead, Dawn.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, first of all, Don Walter, Principal with Don with your Architects, thank you so much for having us back here this evening. We left the last meeting heartened with all the commentary that we received, both very positive and very constructive. And we actually made notes of all the comments. Subsequently, we did receive some further commentary and letters from a butters. So we did go through and developed a pretty detailed matrix with answers to the questions and comments that were posed to us. And probably eighty-five, ninety percent of the items have been addressed. I guess I'd ask you, Madam Chair, how you'd like us to proceed? If we are to go through these items individually? If there are items that the board would specifically like us to address further? We do have imagery to share also. So there's, there's, there's a lot kind of percolating out there, and we're happy to take your lead as to how you'd like us to proceed.
Understood, and thank you. I think, I'll speak for myself, I'm interested in the imagery, but I think what I'd like to see, I noticed a lot of kind of common threads in the feedback we received from a butters. So maybe if you could kind of address those to lead off, I think the scale, the traffic, there were a few things, the screening, there were a few things that kind of I read were kind of common questions. So unless any of my colleagues disagree, I think we should start there, and then maybe you can go through some of the high-level items that board members conveyed questions or suggestions about, and then you can kind of move into questions and comments from there.
Madam Chair, if I may, before we kind of even dive in here, I know this is a very big topic, but I just wanted to understand, how much time are we expecting to be able to to spend on this this evening? Do we have any thoughts on how quickly we'd, in the interest of having people speak expeditiously and not be repetitive and also be able to answer all of the items that are before us?
Excellent question. I was figuring this would, it's really the biggest item on our agenda and the only application. I think we went about two hours on this topic last time. I'm figuring it would be comparable this time. But if we can go faster, that's not a bad thing, but I also want particularly our residents to feel like, I think there are a few people here. I want to make sure we leave ample time for public participation.
Understood.
Good question. Thank you. And I think we will, town staff will be giving us kind of time checks every hour to kind of help keep us cognizant of where we're at.
So with that being said, perhaps we start with the building imagery, then move to the site?
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Chip, you want to share?
Yep. Give me one second. So let me...
No, not much. This is just, just the, just the new background for...
I'm just not being shared yet, Chip.
Oh, sorry. Yes, hang on. Zoom makes you do that one extra step. Oh, geez.
So, yeah, so it's, so if I could, what we'll do is, this is the basic site plan that we did show last time, so not much has changed here. Why don't we, why don't we go to the 3D imagery? Chip, start there.
Sure.
And as, as you bring that up, if I could, as you can imagine, we've gone through design development of the, of the project, which is the appropriate time to bring it to Planning Board, because it allows us to get the drawings to a point where major decisions have been made and really allows us from this point to move into the next phase, which is the development of the construction documents, which ultimately gets us to the point where a builder can construct the building. But I preface this by sharing that because we have spent quite a bit of time looking at the building imagery. In fact, there were a number of iterations of this building before we even got to what we showed you two weeks ago. And from, you know, multiple pitch roofs to different materials, you know, trying to keep in mind the scale of this building. This, this is a commercial building in a mixed-use neighborhood. So clearly, especially when you design a building around its primary function, which has to do with the apparatus within the facility and going out and servicing the public, that in fact makes the building large. So we try to use strategies to keep the building as set down as possible, understanding some of the residential character of the neighbors that are here and using materials that are warm and kind of reminiscent of what was, is an old fire station and prior to that fire station with the gable roof and the other municipal buildings that are along High Street. So in, in saying that, the, you know, the lengthy comments that we received, we took them all under advisement and happy to say that we were able to, I guess, first of all, the, the idea of trying to break the scale down a little bit and create some banding, horizontal banding around the building. We were concerned initially that perhaps if we, if we tried to do too many bands, the building would start to look like a layer cake, which we didn't want. But what you're seeing here, this gray band that's running around right over, over the, basically at the, the second floor continues around the entire building, which we do think has helped to settle the, some of the scale down a little bit. Other comments had to do with window arrangements. We think that the window scale is appropriate because they are punched openings, which are in keeping again with, with the residences in the, in the area, fully understanding that this is not a residence, but there are living quarters within here. So to the right are the primary bunk and dorm spaces, to the left office, and in the middle is the training and meeting room for the fire department. So we've been able to move windows to make them more equally spaced and in doing so, address those windows inside the building too, which was a big driver for the, the patterns that we had going on to begin with, because when you have a number of small bedroom-type spaces or dorm-type spaces, you don't get a lot of play in where the buildings can go horizontally, but we've been able to achieve that, which we're actually quite pleased with. So we hope that you like the imagery that we're showing you here today. Also, the other thing which we have not done yet, but all of the signage over the apparatus bay doors, which are shown as raised letters right now, will in fact be wood or metal, some kind of a plaque with individual, with just two points of contact. So they can be relocated over time, should they need to be, depending on how the fire department is operating. You know, the, the roof edge has been detailed somewhat to give it a bit of shadow, but the, the idea of doing something more traditional in the corners, we actually didn't think was appropriate with this building. You know, it's just like the police station is complementary to Town Hall. It's not a direct reflection of Town Hall. I think the library is another building that while it has gable roofs, is not a very traditional building, is still contemporary, but has some scale to it. So here, we wanted a contemporary take on, you know, some of the traditional flavors of the neighborhood and of the original fire station, hence the gable end section that you see here, which is in keeping with, with that. So those are some of the, the changes that we've made. We're, we're quite pleased with that. Actually think it's, it's helped the building. Oh, I know one of the other things had to do with the the keystones over the apparatus bay doors and what we think those are very appropriate there. The, the scale of those doors and the, in the depth of that precast and having the arches makes sense to have those keystones, whereas over the, the smaller, more residential scale windows, we felt that the, the depth of those window headers or linters, lentils were such that the keystones were not necessarily appropriate, but it actually, because there's so many windows, might make it look even more busy. So, so we did, we did shy away from doing that work there. Do you want to go around to the back, Chip?
Not to interrupt you, but I did see that Amanda had her hand up, so I just wanted to check in.
It was just, I noticed hands were being raised and comments were coming in, and I just wanted to clarify for everybody that comment period will open shortly. And if you put a comment in the Q and A, you have to provide your name and address. Same thing if you present in person. So we're not ignoring you. We just haven't gotten to that yet.
Thank you, Amanda.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. So that was the view from the north. And from the rear, you can see how the, the banding has come around from the front of the building. It's on the south side too. It helps that actually in elevation tie together with the, the roof edge of the, of the maintenance bay. One of the other comments that we heard had to do with making something of the training tower, more than just a training tower, maybe having some sort of ornate roof, whether it's hip roof, gable roof, something like that up on top of that piece. We actually shied away from that also because it, it really is something made for training. It does have some height to it. So we, we thought it better that it is something that more disappeared than actually jumped out and became a feature to the building. So that's a quick update with what we've done around the building with the... Chip, something you want to add?
Yeah, no, just a small detail. We also have added, so these, these three windows, the three windows here are training windows for the department. So what we're showing underneath these window sills is a protective piece of metal, just to protect the building. Just for, so when these guys, when, when they throw the ladders up, you know, it has, you know, a surface to hit. So we wanted to make sure we were showing that at these three windows, because this is, they're going to be doing some ladder training here. So that's, if that question might come up, that's the reason that these window sills are shown, what appear to be a little deeper, is this a little different material, but it would probably just be, historically, we usually do a diamond plate type of application there, but maybe something a little more, more muted or in line with the final color of that, uh, of that window sill material, of the same window sill material, something along those lines, we would probably do there. I just wanted to point that out.
Perhaps a brick color too.
Sure.
One of them there. Yep. So I, I guess with that, I don't know, Madam Chair, if you'd like to entertain questions from the board now, or if you'd like us to move into the site?
Typically, we would, we would then, you know, speak with our town engineer slash consultant and then staff and then the board. So I, I, I guess I'm, I'm interested in town staff since, does it make sense to kind of do this iteratively and discuss this, or should we just kind of see the whole package and then start our discussion? Not sure what's most efficient.
I think it might be best to see the whole thing, but I'll defer to anybody else.
That was my instinct as well. I think that's probably the most efficient way to proceed. So, Mr. Walter, please feel free to continue.
Sure. So what we can do now is bring engineers from Langin into the discussion to talk about the site.
Good evening. John Perry here, Langin. I'll echo Dawn's sentiment that we had, I think, we had a really good, you know, discussion last couple of weeks ago when we met. We got some really important feedback that we've kind of gone back to the office and implemented. We're still in the process of implementing some of it. But a few things that we did add in that you can see on this plan here are the EV charging spaces along Hillcrest Place. Yep, there. We've, we've better defined the sidewalk connection from High Street to the main entrance there and clarify that that be five feet wide, which is exceeds, you know, ADA accessibility and is typical for a sidewalk. We've also included a bike rack there, which is, I think, a good location. There's a little bit of a flat space with some landscaping, some hardscape there. We've also updated our landscaping plan. To that sheet. Yep. And again, this is still a little bit of a work in progress. I know there was some comments we got from the board this morning too. So we're, we're taking that feedback and making additional edits, but a few things that we discussed last meeting was the evergreen planting along Hillcrest Place. I've tried to stagger that a little bit more, I think, before we had it much more linear. So we've staggered that to make it a little more natural and get the spacing a little tighter, just to make that a little more nat, more natural looking and, and more screening. The landscape shrubs to the plant south of the building there. We were asked to mix those up a little bit as opposed to having like long, you know, linear points of, of the same shrub. And we've done that to some extent. We've, we've reduced the amount of the same type of shrub we have in a row. I think from four to three, we do still have, you know, three of the same in a row, and then, and then we change, and then we kind of go back to same one down the line a little bit more. We like to at least keep a couple, the three, next to each other for maintenance. Just makes it a little bit more intuitive, I guess, when they're maintaining those, those plants that at least you have, you know, one or two of the same type near each other. But we have definitely taken that feedback and kind of shuffled those up a little bit more. We are looking at adding some more evergreen shrubs near the the driveway entrance along Hillcrest Place there. Right now, we have more kind of low-growing deciduous shrubs. We're going to be replacing those with or adding in some, some evergreen shrubs there. Same goes more out front where we have the mast arm and light cabinet. I think now we're calling out for some grasses, and we're going to replace those with some shrubs as well. And I think somewhere on here, we're still calling out for a a sumac, which I believe we, we discussed last time, and maybe you got the similar comment more recently, that that's not a desirable plant to have on the plant. So we're going to be replacing that with something more appropriate. I think those are the main edits on the site plan. Oh, one more thing I did want to mention is that we are looking at the stormwater system. I know last time we discussed, there was a desire to see if we can get some additional capacity so that we can handle greater than a hundred-year storm event, and we are, we are analyzing that still currently, but we think we can at least get you know, probably not all the way to the 500-year event, but at least additional capacity in there to handle the hundred, exceeding a hundred-year event. That is, those documents are forthcoming.
One other thing that did change here on, with the fence along the generator previously, we're showing this generator being kind of wrapped with the same stockade fence along the property line. We did reduce that down for a couple of reasons. One mainly just to make sure we're framing the dumpster enclosure. But it being the height, the six-foot fence that we have, you're only going to be covering half the height of the generator anyway. And then also what we're finding out is with the, with the acoustical enclosure that we have, there are doors that we need to account for in the side of it and on the end usually. And in doing so, we will have to, it will affect the spacing of our mullards, which is easy to do, but to have, to accommodate the fence, we would be increasing that footprint out further into the parking lot. So I think, and the dumpster, or the dumpster, excuse me, the generator enclosure, we actually have some photos of that as well that I can grab here. So this is an example. This is kind of our basis of design. This is the hand, this is the Pine Hills generator, and this is, the generator is within this enclosure. This is the acoustical enclosure, and it's, you know, provides a, you know, a pretty clean look aesthetically as far as generators go. So that was kind of our intent was to test, let, we would still be protecting the view from the, from the property line and the butter to the north, but to, on the parking lot side, to account for these doors that will be required for accessing the generator inside. We did reduce the, we did reduce that, that fence around the generator as well.
Just on the parking lot side?
Just on the parking lot side, yep.
Thank you. Did you have additional visuals and whatnot you wanted to share?
Yeah. So this is just, I think John spoke to this already. This was just kind of a slide, just so we could not compromise the, the site plan or the landscape plan. But just a zoom in on the planning schedule and some of the regulations that would accompany the previous plan we reviewed. And I do know, John, if you want to speak to this at all, that we did have some follow-up questions about the photometric.
Yeah, I think specifically along High Street, where we're calling out for the ornamental light there. Uh, where we're calling out for the, um, the more ornamental light there. We're showing one near the existing mast arm, uh, and there's already a street light there. It's going to be replaced. So we're, we're looking into, um, you know, we probably don't need that additional light there would be redundant. So we're looking into. Updating the photometric plan to model the existing light, um, without a new one, and we think it's going to be. Yeah, pretty similar to what we're showing there. And I think there was some comments about, um. Trying to limit. The concrete exposure on the bases. You know, from a, uh, an aesthetic standpoint, um, so we're updating our details. In that regard as well, the, the ones more, uh, listed as A. In the rear, uh, parking lot there. Um, are, you know, more of a typical like parking lot type lighting, um, so those probably will have a bit of, uh, concrete exposure just so that. They hold up there, they're a little more, you know, um, durable with, with snow removal and things like that. The B decorative ones will have a nice kind of decorative base as opposed to that exposed concrete. And then the Cs are the building mounted lights, so that doesn't, yeah, even apply.
And John, just, just to be clear, the A fixtures in the back are full cutoff. So there's no light spill beyond the property line in their dark sky compliant.
That's right.
No, thank you. And I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but I do see, um, Elijah's his hand up.
Uh, yes, I just want to, uh, re- reiterate Amanda's earlier point, uh, as to the, uh. The flow of the public meeting, uh, we'll be having the presentation being made currently by the applicant team. Uh, then there'll be staff comments, um, the board will be, uh, you know, commenting as well and then. Um, the chair will be opening up for a public comment, so just wanted to. Again, ensure that the public will have, uh, time to, to speak.
Yes, thank you, um, for folks who maybe aren't used to coming to our meetings. We, we will be having public participation, but there, there is kind of a process we follow, um, and I. Intend to leave more than ample time for public participation because I know there are a lot of folks in attendance tonight who have. Thoughts they wish to share with us, um, so we will be taking your comments and your questions, just not at this time.
And sorry, and please, um, specify your address if you're submitting in writing. We can't read the comment unless there's an address associated when we get to the public comment portion.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I know this is a little out of order, but I do see that Josh has had his hand up. Josh, I, I don't want to leave you hanging. If you had something. That you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I could wait. I was just, um.
Okay.
Wondering what the, the specs were on the generator and if we needed the same generator sizes we did for the entirety of the Pine Hill School or. We could downsize that a little bit. I don't know what KW that is.
I can, I can speak to that. So, um. This is actually a larger generator than the, than the Pine Hills generator, uh, the Pine Hills is a 500 kilowatt. This is a 750. And that has, has to do with the fact that this is a hundred percent, uh, building backup. Versus the, the, uh, the Pine Hill School, which would be, you know, kind of selective in what is being backed up. On the emergency generator, um, so we're looking at a 750 here. Um, which is slightly larger, um, not as much as we thought, um. Seeing as how it's, you know, 25% larger, um, but it, uh, it is slightly larger than the Pine Hill, um. Generator.
So, and just curious, what, what was the, the major demand on? For power, backup power in the, the facility?
Um, it's, I mean, just the fact that it's an all electric building, um, the large, I, I. Not sure of the largest draw on that, but, um, we can certainly find that out.
Yeah, then, as should mention, the big, the biggest difference is where, where Pine Hill. Just needs to remain operational in terms, it needs to keep a, a temperature within the building. So things don't freeze and. Uh, coolers and freezers don't thaw out. Here, this is a fully functioning public safety building, so. Uh, everything that's in there on a regular basis needs to be functioning when the power is lost. It's the generator size.
Okay, yeah, I'd still be interested at, at some point to understand, you know, where, where that draw is coming from, like HVAC tends to be the. The largest draw usually in, in this type of facility. So I'm surprised given the order of magnitude larger Pine Hill is. I understand that like the. Not everything is on E power, but i- it seems quite large for, for facility this size. Just surprised.
Yeah, we, we can provide that for our engineers. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one other thing while we're on the photometric still, um. Uh, the B fixture was, um, also an item that was, um. Just noted in the, in the matrix that we put together, I think was from the beta, um. And the intent is that the B fixture will, uh, will match the existing. Town fixture that's along High Street. So I think it was in regard to the height of the fixture. Um, these fixtures will be specified to match the town standard, which is along High Street, so. That will be the, the plan for those. And I mean, and. Think we are, John, if I understand, we're looking at going down to just adding one at this corner and this one would be a relocated. The relocated one that's currently up the street a little bit, so it just would fall to the same location.
That's right.
So. A little bit more about the, um. And just showing again the generator, um, the stockade fence and the, uh. And the imagery of the, of the proposed retaining wall along the north side of the project. Just. Just since I thought it might be a feature discussed further, we thought we'd keep this imagery in here, but, um, nothing on this slide has changed since, uh, since last meeting.
Okay.
Then if we have, um. What we want to get, um. There was just, um, I kept the overview of the, uh, of kind of the, the neighborhood in here for. For conversations, um, regarding, uh. Pedestrian traffic and, uh, vehicular traffic in, in the neighborhood, so, um, but, uh. Think at this time, I think we're pretty much wrapped up our, our imagery for, uh, for today, um. We want to jump to, uh, kind of the, the question asking phase.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, excellent. At this time, I, I saw Phil Paradies here. If we could, uh, get some input from Phil, that would be wonderful.
All right, yeah. Phil Paradies with Beta, he's a town engineer. The, uh, project is, uh, obviously it's a replacement project, um. The biggest, uh, impact will be the removal of the. Um, removal of the, uh, excess driveway to the rear, uh, obviously the height of the building and the, and the size of the building. Um, we are. So obviously the. The screening of the building is, is going to be important, uh, relative to, you know, how, how the neighbors are impacted. Um, and, um. So if, if I just go through my letter, uh, dated. Uh, October 15th, uh, we had just, uh, just a few. A lo- a lot of the, um, comments are, uh, kind of, uh, administrative. And, uh, especially in the storm water part, but the project should provide, um. A narrative on the sustainability of, of the project to address. Uh, energy conscious design, energy efficiency, renewable energy and water efficiency. The project, uh, is proposing 26 parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. Um, there's a, been an explanation of that, uh, included in my letter. So, um, Beta just defers to the planning board relative to the, um. Uh, the, the, the use and the, and the. Uh, spaces provided, uh, we, there was very little information relative to the, uh. At, uh, the. Rear, rear, um, drive. Overhead doors and the, the spaces, the use in the back. Uh, it looked like, uh, the, the biggest space there was, uh, a maintenance bay. Um, but we would, uh, prefer to have with some information relative to how. Uh, what, what is going to be housed there and how, how frequent the, um, the trips are for those along with the, uh. Uh, uh, parking generate, you know, the, the employees, uh, parking in the back, um. So there was, we. Uh, as I mentioned, the screening is, is going to be important. Uh, I don't know if they addressed the light in the front. I'm not aware of what the other, uh, light poles are in terms of height. On, uh, I, I street, I would assume that they meet the, the standard, um. So we, one of the, uh, big things for, uh, generators, and I don't know if there's any rooftop equipment, it's going to be the noise. Uh, impact, potentially impacting the, um, local residents there. Uh, so we should probably have some information on, on that, what kind of testing schedules there are. Stormwater wise, I know I, I think I left one comment off here, but, uh. So, you know, it's, uh, SW seven, the rainfall data, they, they use two different. Uh, hundred year rainfall, uh, amounts, so they should be the same. Uh, based on the, uh, Atlas 14, NOAA Atlas 14, um. The, uh, also the, uh, test pit with limited information. I, we recommend for the big facility like that. To, to have some infiltration testing done, um, and, and such, uh. Other than that, uh, though, those were, I, I understand, we, uh, we are well aware as, as the town engineer. Of the, uh, the flooding issues on Hillcrest. Uh, Hillcrest Place there and, um, we are, I'm very encouraged that a lot of the runoff is going to be. Uh, infiltrated in this site, uh, if that's possible, um. So, yeah. That's, that's all I have today.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I would like to ask the staff for any input, then we'll move on to board questions and then public participation. So if our town staff would like to share comments and insights?
Sure, I can, um, so I had sent, after seeing this latest set of plans, I'd sent a number of questions to Doran Woodier. Um, and the engineers today, and most of the questions were addressed usually with the response that. We'll see those, uh, questions answered on the next plan set and comments were about landscaping, about lighting, about, um. Um, the medallion on the, uh, the back of the building, small details like that. Uh, there were a couple that I just wanted to draw down on. One is the curbing. The current plans show concrete curbing in the rear parking lot. And the planning board town standard has always been granite curbing, so I, um, just wanted to see how the playing board feels about that. If they're looking to, um, to waive their standard, in this case to allow concrete curbing, or if they feel that, uh, granite curbing. Should be, uh, put in place at this location. So that's one, one area I wanted to have the playing board have some discussion about. Um, another, not a very significant, um, point, but the bollards, there are several bollards, over 50 bollards throughout the. Property, I think some of them are necessary, some of them might not be, but they're all proposed to be painted safety yellow. And I think with all the attention that's, that's been put into the architecture for this building, having bollards throughout the site that, that are all yellow. Probably is not necessary, I think it could be distracting, so I'd like to hear the playing board's thoughts on that as well. Um, on the landscaping, one of my comments was that the, uh, landscaping along Hillcrest Road, the. Um, plants that are proposed are, uh, of a variety that only grows to 15 to 20 feet tall, and that's intentional. Um, on the, the engineer's part to comply with every source's requirement, the trees within 15 feet. Of a power line, not exceed 25 feet in height. I do want to point out that the trees that are along the Hillcrest side of this property are intended to screen a 69 foot tall building. While no height of a tree is going to fully screen that, trees that only go up to 20 feet height are really not going to help too much from. Um, the second floor of the houses on Hillcrest, so I'd strongly encourage. A different type of tree, and if we need to request a waiver from EverSource, we can do that. We're talking about, uh, evergreen trees. Planted approximately eight feet away from the poles that have the wires on them, and they're all conical in form. There's no interference that would come from a 25, 30 foot tall tree being placed in that location. So I think that's something that is worth pursuing. Again, I, I'd want to hear the playing board's, um. Opinion on that. One other item is the dumpster enclosure fence. It's proposed at six feet tall. Uh, the existing dumpsters on the site are 65 feet, some dumpsters are taller, 65 inches, I'm sorry. Some dumpsters are taller than that, um, a standard dumpster can be six feet to seven feet tall, so. I'd recommend considering going with a seven or eight foot fence instead of a six stockade fence, but, um. Again, leave that completely up to you to discuss. Um, also, the, um, the island in the back of the parking lot. And there's a little strip of landscaped area adjacent to the building. At the last playing board meeting, there were requests to see something other than grasses in those locations. Um, board members specifically requested shrubs. Originally, they requested trees in the island and the response was the trees. Might not thrive in a five foot wide island, and also there could be a problem when you do bring trucks around to the back. To bring them to the maintenance bay that they could clip branches of the trees. So I think shrubs are, are, are fine instead of trees, but grasses. Probably are not ideal there. I do think that the, the response from the engineers, whether the grasses were chosen because they stand up. Better in that environment, um, but it, it's a little bit different than what the playing board typically requires. Uh, and then finally, I just wanted to point out that there were two areas that the re- playing board really needs to wait on before voting. Even if you feel you're all set with the architecture and the landscaping, the lighting, when you hear all the comments from, um. The, your, your peer review from the engineers. There are two, the two areas that you really can't vote without having fully resolved are stormwater management and sustainability. Um, and then just to clarify that the sustainability section of the bylaw. Requires that the applicant provide a plan today for how they would. Propose to meet 50% of their energy needs in the next five years. Um, so it's the plan that has to come at the time of the application, and then they have five years to actually implement it. And if things change throughout that five year period, there's an opportunity to come back and talk to the planning board about, um. How things have changed and request approval for some, for something different. But that, the sustainability plan is something that we're still waiting for from the applicant, and that would be coming at your next hearing session. So for all the, the smaller things and the larger things that are still out there, I do think that the. Board probably won't be ready to vote at the end of this meeting, but it'd be very helpful if you could discuss your thoughts on various issues. To let the applicant know where you stand and then eventually to let the zoning board know also where you stand so that they can weigh in. On some of the other, um, aspects of the project. We talked a little bit about comments. There is a comment matrix that was added to your. Uh, meeting pocket and it has not only all of the comments that came out of the last hearing session. But it has comments from several letters that came from area residents, um, to be addressed. And I thought it might be helpful to go through those comments. One by one and address them, um, and then open, when you're ready, open it up to public comments so that the, the abutters can. Give more, um, real, li- live updates on, on their thoughts there. The most significant of the comments, I think, that were, uh, introduced in all those letters had to do with the width of the building. And the need to eliminate that driveway. So I know that, uh, Don touched on that a little bit, but, um. Perhaps we can go into a little bit more detail and hear from some of the town representatives as well about why. That is or is not a feasible option.
Dawn, I'd love to start that if you're all right with that.
That'd be great.
Okay. Um, so, thank you again for having us and thank you to all the butters who submitted their letters and concerns. We've been taking the time over the last few weeks to digest that, and so I just want to make a couple of comments. And then obviously open it up to, to further questions from the planning board, record it regarding the. Mechanics Bay and the driveway. So it's been suggested that if we remove the mechanics bay from the north side of the property. That would allow us to move the property. Or move the, the building footprint back and restore the driveway. There's a variety of reasons why the department is requesting to have mechanics bay. One. They have a mechanics bay currently in their, in their, um, in their building. It's not ideal. Obviously, it's a much smaller building, a pad has been constructed out in the parking lot to. Do some of the bigger projects because it can't be done inside, but having a mechanics bay on property. Allows the department to both save money and. But having a mechanics bay on property allows the department to both save money in terms of labor costs. It would cost, you know, roughly two hundred dollars an hour to send an apparatus out to be serviced. And it reduces the time that those vehicles are out of service. If we're sending it to Norwood or Dedham to be repaired, that's time that those vehicles are not in service. So the, the need for the mechanics bay to be on property is there. The cost associated with the mechanics bay is something else to be considered. It's approximately three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars as part of this project, you know, built in. If we were to build a new mechanics bay somewhere off-site, that would be anywhere between one and two million. So that's another factor that we have to take into consideration here. Even if the town had the appetite to build both the fire station that is needed and a separate mechanics bay off-site from six thirty-seven High Street, the town does not own appropriate land to build such a project. So, you know, the town owns land behind Starbucks, that's landlocked. It's, it's not accessible, it's not gonna be able to be used as a mechanics bay. The Deerfield School is under the care, custody, and control of the school committee. That's not a place that we can build a mechanics bay. I've heard people say, you know, why don't we put this at DPW? DPW doesn't have adequate space for a mechanics bay. The DPW, in fact, has such limited mechanic space that they cannot um restore or do any maintenance on any trucks larger than a pickup truck. Any DPW vehicle larger than a deep uh a pickup truck has to be sent off-site at cost, at delay, to be worked on. Uh and then the other location that I've heard kicked around is, you know, why don't we put this at the American Legion and a couple of different things there. One, we don't yet know what the final use of the American Legion will be. As a part of this project, we're proposing it be the temporary operations of the fire station, which would be both housing firefighters and their apparatus. But we're not sure what it's going to be past that life. If we were to design a mechanics bay on that site, it would insul- involve a lot of work to the site. Digging minimum three to five feet down to build a slab strong enough to hold the weight of the apparatus. And that would prove difficult, because the American Legion site is adjacent to, you know, slash on top of a wetland. So that's not an ideal site. And then, even if the town had the appetite to fund a standalone mechanics bay and had a, a property in which to put it on, there's a number of reasons why the design team or the working group would be recommending that the driveway be removed. Firstly, the apparatus that comes out currently onto High Street, so we're talking about the ambulances and the engine and the ladder. They cannot access to the rear of the building through that driveway. That driveway is too steep for the apparatus. They currently go around back through Hillcrest to access the mechanics bay. That's what they currently do, that's what they would be continuing to do in this current, in the proposed project. The driveway was never intended to be a public roadway. We understand that that is, you know, an unintended consequence of how it's been used because of other traffic concerns in the area, which I totally agree need to be addressed. But having that driveway being used as a public roadway opens the town and the department up to liability. And so it's not something that we would be looking to continue, even if, even if everything, we moved that mechanics bay. And then additionally, removing that um parking asphalt uh is reducing the impervious service of the entire site project. A couple other uh ideas that have been thrown out there, which I I love, have been the consolidation of town services, right? Do we need to have duplicate of different items? And so a mechanic space is a, is a, is an area where you might look to say, alright, can we put this somewhere else? So the police station does have a a garage, a space where they can work on their vehicles. A police cruiser is, is quite a bit smaller than a fire apparatus. The fire apparatus would simply not fit in the garage that is built to to work on police apparatus. Uh I had mentioned the DPW, the DPW also has very large equipment that needs to be worked on. The DPW space at Carby Street simply does not have the space to work on larger vehicles as it is. Those large vehicles are sent off-site to have work be done on them. I've also heard uh the idea, which I I loved, was could we take the temporary structure that we're using to house the apparatus at the American Legion and make that a permanent system? And that's where the mechanic bay would be going forward. I had mentioned there's concern about having to dig deep into the, into the site to make that sustainable. And the proximity to the wetlands is is a concern. And also, the piece that we are proposing to rent to house the apparatus is not tall enough to house the fire apparatus in mechanic work. It's, it's tall enough to house it, to protect it from the weather, but when we're doing apparatus work, we need to put it on Jackson. And the structure that we're proposing to rent simply does not accommodate that. So those are the main reasons why we are needing to put the mechanics bay where it is. And I understand that that driveway has been a source of relief for neighbors in that neighborhood for a long period of time, and happy to discuss other alternatives for it, but that is um what has led the working group to the decision that we've made.
Well, if I could add, one thing, we, one thing we did not discuss is that if, if you were to take the mechanics bay up and slide the building forward, so in fact, there was a drive aisle there, you would eliminate all the parking on the south side of the site. So, that that wouldn't meet the programmatic needs of the fire department or the public.
Thank you. Uh Nora, you had a, a few um aggregated comments from the input we received. I think this is a good idea to kind of just finish going through those before we move on to board comments.
Okay, and most of them were, were fairly insignificant. Um the first one was uh concrete curb or granite curb? What, what are you looking for the standard to be on this project?
I'm sorry, I meant um the aggregated comments like from the public.
Few, okay. Yes, so, so there, there are uh several comments that are in the um the matrix that have been brought forth by the, the residents, um including concerns about traffic during construction especially, but even on an ongoing basis, and how that would be addressed. Traffic that comes off of High Street onto Windsor Road and then uphill crest. I'd say that is the next most frequent comment that we've heard from the resident.
Um I'm gonna tap into my new friend, Officer Baker, uh to talk about ongoing traffic in the area, so we're sort of assuming the, the building is built, what would the ongoing concerns would be? And then separately, we can address the construction concerns.
So in regards to traffic, uh for all the construction vehicles that are gonna be needed for the project, where would they be staging? Does, do we know, do we know that?
We don't know for certain. I would say there's been a couple of items, or a couple of areas suggested when the police station was being built. Saint Margaret Mary's was used. Um there's another option for could we tap into the Deerfield being used? There are a number of areas where vehicles could be queued rather than going through the neighborhood.
And I think that's, that's important, because uh as part of our documentation for anyone bidding this project, once it's resolved, we will dictate uh where they cannot park. And perhaps part of that will be, here's where you can park. Uh but parking on Hillcrest would not be an option.
Okay. Um I think with any project of this size, um it would be appropriate for obviously police details, police officers to be on site to uh mitigate the parking issue. And have the safe flow of traffic, uh both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. I know that on both sides of, both travel lanes of High Street, there are breakdown lanes. I mean, they're, they're about eight feet, they don't really accommodate like bigger commercial vehicles, like concrete mixers and stuff. But we can definitely um set up a traffic pattern so that vehicles can move safely on High Street on both directions. And we also have crosswalks on both sides of the street, so anytime somebody is on the um the fire station side of the, the cro- oh, I'm sorry, the sidewalk, we can always uh hold traffic and set up like a temporary crosswalk, kinda like what we used to do for the Deerfield School, the path that ran behind Deerfield. And we had a crossing guard there until the Deerfield School merged with the Pine Hill School.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Amanda, I'd like to check in with staff, and I see they raised their hands.
Um I don't wanna disrupt, I was just gonna refresh everyone on the noise in construction bylaw, so people can understand the types of restrictions that they'd be subject to with construction activities.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and do that, or?
Uh yeah, I, I think that might answer some of the questions and address the concerns.
Um so first of all, this project will go through an administrative earth material movement, and that was actually just recorded today. Um as part of that decision, there are conditions that all trucks carrying earth materials to and from six thirty-seven High Street shall be required to access the site from High Street primarily, and Windsor Road or Hillcrest Place secondarily, and shall proceed directly to the site. No trucks associated with the project shall be permitted to travel on any other non arterial road in Westwood. Then you, um another part of the condition, which is also in our bylaw, um general bylaw, chapter two ninety-two for noise and construction, work, construction activities related to this project are only permitted Monday through Saturday between the hours of seven AM and seven PM and Sunday between the hours of twelve PM and seven PM. So all projects are required to follow that, and this um FS one is no exception to that.
Thank you. Uh and thank you to everyone for helping address that. Um Nora, was there any other kind of common concerns?
Yep, there are several. The next, I'd say, uh one of the most uh frequently commented on is stormwater management. There've been concerns expressed by people who live in the area behind the fire station about existing stormwater conditions. Much, there's much flow off of High Street and off of the, the uh fire station site right now that comes down both Hillcrest and Windsor Road, and has a negative effect on homes along those roads. If you could explain how this project is going to address some of those concerns, the ones that are related to water flowing off the fire department site, and um if anything else can be done about the water that's flowing on Windsor Road.
Don, can you take that one?
Yeah, so uh I'll start, and then John, I'll let you get into the details, but great point, Nora, about the sheet flow from High Street down the access road, all the way to the back to Hillcrest. Obviously, the access road will be eliminated, but more importantly, uh we'll basically have two separate stormwater systems. So the first system will be located, maybe Chip, if you could share that, that image again. Uh will be located up, up on High Street, under the apparatus apron. So that would be one system to address all of the uh surface uh water that falls on the apparatus apron, basically the front driveway leading out to a High Street in the rear of the building, and and John did mention this in his presentation. There is an infiltration system that currently has been designed for a hundred-year storm. It was suggested, hey, why don't we go to a five-hundred-year storm? Excellent idea. Uh we're not sure we can get to a five-hundred-year storm. Hundred-year is the standard, but we're working to increase the size uh as much as the site will allow, so it's more than a hundred years. And what that system does in the, on the back lot is that that will take care of all, of all the surface uh area in the rear plus all of the roof drainage. So any water coming off the roofs uh above would come down below grade and feed into this infiltration system, thus not allowing um really much of any, if any, stormwater to sheet onto Hillcrest Road. So it'll be a vastly improved situation from what uh, what the neighbors currently experience. How's that, John?
Yeah, and I guess I'd just add that currently on site there's no, you know, infiltration or stormwater management to speak of, really. There's a, like one catch basin that collects some of the water from the parking lot along Hillcrest. Uh that just kinda goes directly into the municipal storm system in the street there.
John, this is Josh. You, I, I think it might be useful to show everybody, if somebody could share that app for people to see, that might have had that question. I, I think we have a couple of topo maps.
Do you have that, Chip?
No.
I can put my screen up if, if that's okay with everyone.
Thank you. And Elijah, I did see your hand up as well. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, while I was getting that up, I just wanted to note that it is uh eight oh seven, so we've been going for about an hour and seven minutes.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, John.
Yep. Okay, so I'll go to the existing condition sheet real quick here, which shows the current condition and this is the rear parking lot here, and you can see the, the dashed contours with the, the number that represents the, the elevation here. So there's one catch basin, well, there's guys, there's a couple of catch basins in this parking lot here, uh that, that take some of the water from the parking lot. That really just kind of accepts it and conveys it into the the town system in Hillcrest. Um and other portion of this is kind of a break line here in the current uh topography. So some of that water just sheet flows down the driveway indirectly into the street as well. Uh I think a bit of it may, may sheet flow onto um down this, this grass slope here as well. And there's a similar condition in the front of the site, too. Only there's any, uh there's no, you know, catch basins, no infiltration, anything like that. So our plan is to, back to my stormwater plan here, is to install two pretty large um subsurface systems that will, um as you can see, all the roof drainage in the site will be piped through a pipe and into a, a large subsurface infiltration system. So these are um open void, concrete chambers with open bottoms, so they promote water going into the ground as opposed to into, directly into the storm system. That's all the roof runoff uh from the building goes there. All of the runoff from the rear parking lot uh will be directed towards this catch basin, which uh pipes into that system as well. And then that will infiltrate. And there is an overflow, whatever doesn't infiltrate will go into the, into that, that storm line there. But it will be a vast improvement from what is occurring now, and there's a similar condition uh in the front of the site here with a, with another similar underground um stormwater system here. And we did um complete some test pits and borings on site. We're gonna be doing some more uh just to kind of double-check a few things, but we did find nice sandy gravelly soils that should be able to accept the uh the water and recharge it um to the maximum extent feasible, rather than just having it go straight into the system. And I will note too that, you know, while the building is getting bigger, we're actually not increasing the amount of impervious area on the site. It's essentially the same. Um so while we're, you know, maintaining the same amount of impervious area, we're adding a lot of um plantings. And we're adding a, a really robust stormwater system to the site as well.
Thank you. Um I thought I saw Todd Quachan's hand up. I'm not sure if I, I thought I saw Todd's hand up, but not sure if he's, we still have Todd?
It's probably because he got bumped off again.
Ah, I see. Uh, I saw his hand up while he was still in the room, but um
Uh, I'm here.
Todd back.
Sorry.
Hi, um, did you have a comment you wanted to add to this part of the conversation?
I do. Uh, we just have a tremendous amount of experience with the drainage issues that have been back there, especially in dealing with and trying to mitigate some of the issues that have obviously impacted Hillcrest. And I just, as a recommendation, and Phil, you can attest to this as well. I know we have done some um some minor things, obviously nothing that I'm confident or or Phil or Brendan would be confident in resolving all the issue out there. But my recommendation would be to look into multiple catch basins um running up against Hillcrest Place. Just because I know that there's been runoff in the past from the funeral home as well that has impacted and crossed over and and leached into the fi- existing fire station parking lot. But I don't think that one catch basin is enough to capture everything that flows and sheds off that parking lot. So I would strongly recommend at least two to possibly three catch basins. And if anybody wants to meet me out there, I can pretty much show you where the issues have been. Obviously, they're gonna be different with a new layout, but um, Phil, I I would assume that you're in agreement with me that just one probably isn't gonna do it out there.
Yeah, uh, I I think the the parking, the parking lot actually is a lot smaller um than the orig- than the existing one. Uh, a lot of it will be captured on the roof drain, so it might not be that bad.
It's the corners that I'm concerned with, though. It's, I mean, if you're looking, I I can't obviously point on screen. Um, but if you're looking kind of towards the right hand corner and the left hand, just right and left hand corner where that one catch basin is proposed. I just think you'd be be it'd be better suited to have three. So you'd have that one in the middle and then one on top of it, one just underneath it in the corner of those bump outs would be my recommendation, but.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say that's there's something we can certainly look at.
Okay.
And I'll I'll note too that that is a double catch basin that we're showing as opposed to a single, so it's a you know, it's it's twice as big as a normal one.
Yeah.
But we we can certainly take a look at that.
Obviously, it 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 depends too when you pitch all the pavement out there and everything else, not to microanalyze it right now, but just based on the existing and what has previously been the issue out there. That has always been the the hotspots of where that flow is shedded over towards Hill Hillcrest, so just a thought.
Thank you. I think that stormwater is is a a concern for many folks that I've heard um and for board members as well, so I appreciate that insight. Thank you. Uh, Nora.
So you you will be getting an updated stormwater management plan and it'll show any expansions of those underground chambers that are possible, any additional catch basins and then provide the calculations. So you'll, before you're asked to make a decision on the project, you'll have complete information on the stormwater. Uh, the next area I think that has uh attracted several comments is the size and the mass asking building. And I know in Don's initial presentation, he touched on why the building is the size that it is. Um, but Dornwood, you're also producing graphics to show a comparison of the existing building to the proposed building so that we can be sure that everyone is on the same page and understands exactly what we're talking here. So I don't know if Chip, if you're able to show those images that show the line of the existing building superimposed on the new building, just might give people um be sure we are, we're all looking at it the same way.
Yeah, so i- if I could, just as as way of a refresher, the um the new building on hillside, the flat roofs that you see have a height of thirty seven feet and the top of the gable is fifty two feet. If you compare that to the other public buildings in a along uh High Street. Uh, Town Hall is forty to fifty feet tall uh to the roof. The library is about forty feet to the peak, the police station is forty two feet to the peak. So e- except for the the gable end, which is just a skinny piece facing the street. The the building height is in keeping with the um the rest of the public buildings on uh on Health Street. Uh, in the rear, obviously, it's it's a different situation because we have a a full grade, I mean, a full uh floor height difference difference because of the the sloping to the back. Uh, hence the flat roof being uh at fifty one feet. The maintenance bay thirty four, training stairs sixty three, and uh top of the gable is at sixty nine. Um, but that's that's because of the grade back there. Uh, in terms of the mass of the building, again, to reiterate, it's it's really dictated by the apparatus base. We go back to the front, uh Chip.
Yep.
We have five ap- five apparatus bays uh to house the um the equipment within the uh within the station. The door, the front entry door that you see to the left uh is basically the the width of another apparatus base, so that's that's about the the minimum width that we can do of the front of that building. What you see to the right is the, you're seeing the back of the maintenance bay that's set back towards the uh the back of the site. And if if you note the height of that that space, it's basically as tall as the apparatus bays, but goes down a full floor below. And that's really important because to to have a useful maintenance bay, it needs to be uh of a height. And as I mentioned, uh, it's thirty four feet. So when you bring apparatus in there to be worked on, you can basically pop the front of the uh piece of equipment up uh so you can get underneath and and work on it. So that's why that's so tall. Uh, we actually did look at earlier on in the in the project, hey, is there a way we can fit this underneath the building that you see here? And because of its height, it it just doesn't work. So um, uh, we did, we did try to make that work out. So so back to the mass, the um with the apparatus base in the front entrance dictating the width of what you see on High Street, the height is dictated by, again, the size of the apparatus. In this case, the apparatus don't have to uh raise their hoods, but we have fourteen foot high doors by fourteen feet wide to safely get apparatus in and out of the station. And then um it's set up of a depth uh so up to the the ladder truck could fit in there. But above the apparatus, you've got the doors that open, you have mechanical equipment, and you have the structure on top of that. So so really what happens is your your floor to floor height, so from the apparatus bay floor up to the second floor is uh approximately twenty two or twenty two feet, six uh inches tall, where we would typically do a floor quarter floor height uh in a commercial building of fourteen, fourteen and a half feet. So that dictated the height of the building um being where it is, because then you have the the typical floor um for the office and and residential, the living space on top of that. So that's where the, that's where the mass of the building and the size of it came from.
Thank you.
Let me just click through the uh the other elevations just to
I think that's helpful.
Yeah, so that's obviously the the red lines that you're seeing there. I know that it's faint, but that's the existing building uh profile.
So what that shows is that the existing building is actually closer to the High Street um property line than the existing.
That's right. The apparatus bays are very similar location. The piece you're looking at is the piece beyond is the northernmost piece um of the current building, but I just did kind of the overall silhouette.
Yeah, the office and living space. If you look at that High Street elevation again, Chip, can see that.
Yep.
There you go. So what what you see to the right with the uh the chimney and the pitch roof, that's what projects forward.
Kind of see, going back to the plan, this piece here that is out the most.
Thank you. I think those diagrams are helpful to make sure everyone has the same image in their mind of of what the new building will look like in comparison to the old building. Um, the next probably most common um comments that were received had to do with financial concerns, which really is a little bit outside of the purview of the planning board in reviewing this, other than the planning board trying not to increase the cost of the project in its review. So I don't, I don't think there's a whole lot to get into discussion at this meeting on the financial aspects of the project, but they will be discussed further along as the project goes through more stages uh before it ends up um coming to a town meeting.
Nora, should I mention, I'm sorry, should I mention the cost effectiveness of this particular design?
Sure.
In in what what we what we've tried to do here is um look, look to the past and uh understand what was there originally. Hence, what you see, the the gable piece uh in the center of the building. Um, but the rest of the building is is basically a masonry building with flat roofs. And that is just about the most cost effective public safety slash municipal building um that we could design. And uh with with, you know, some some of the precast banding, which helps to give it some character and and the framing around the apparatus bay doors and in the uh in the base you see around the main entrance. But otherwise, it's it's um, you know, quite cost effective in in the approach.
Thank you. So the next area of concern uh that we heard from several others, it's kind of a joint area. It's landscaping, screening, uh privacy concerns and light intrusion. I think they all kind of flow together. Essentially, the question is how can the residents who live next door, behind, or even across the street from this building best protected from any ill effects of the design?
Yeah, um, so as we mentioned, all of the the light fixtures in the back of the building in the parking lot are all cut off fixtures, meaning that the light will stay on the fire station site itself, so there won't be any light bleed uh off into the neighborhood. Uh, in terms of the windows that you see in the building, these are windows that all come with blinds. We haven't gotten to that level of detail to know exactly what they are, but uh blinds and shades uh will be part of this building all the way around uh to minimize any uh light bleeding out from the uh from the building itself.
And then as far as landscaping, uh some of the comments we had earlier, talking about the size of the trees in the back, um, the types of trees that are used and and how important that they fully screen the parking lot to the greatest extent possible.
Right, so we we continue to look at that with uh with Lang and I think we've we've taken a baby step from the last meeting. We need to take another step based upon the comments that we've uh gone through leading up to tonight's meeting.
So uh I I think when you get to the point of taking uh residents' comments, you'll hear more, but that's the gist of the most common comments that came across in all the letters that are posted to the meeting page.
Thank you. Um, that was certainly helpful for me and and I hope it was helpful helpful for everyone, including the residents who are in attendance. Um, Nora, was there anything else uh from staff at this time?
Um, I think the only other comments from staff are the importance of getting final plans, getting updated project reports, the sustainability report, the um stormwater report, or probably the two most essential, but also an updated photometric report and an updated traffic report. Um, and with the traffic report having a a section focused on pedestrian traffic. I know uh Officer Baker mentioned the uh possibility of having a fenced off uh pedestrian route down Windsor Road during the period of construction to help people get through, which I think would definitely be helpful to physically separate pedestrians from vehicles. But it's a narrow street with an extremely tight radius that we will have trucks trying to make the turn. I'm not sure putting a um a a fence barrier is feasible at that location and still getting trucks through to the back of the site, so that I think that's something that we'll just have to look at a little bit closer. Um, and I I think it's important for everyone to understand that every effort will be made to make this as safe as it possibly can be. Um, and on the most, I'd say the most determining factor in that is probably having a detail there at all times during the um period of active construction.
Thank you. Uh, Amanda, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'll also add that they will be providing a noise study once they finalize the design for the generator and all the equipment being used. So that is something that will also be required as part of their submittal. Um, and then one comment I would um just suggest to the applicant team that they have examples, if not an updated rendering of the signs. It's our understanding that the fire department will be making these, so I think it's important. Given that this isn't a high street, the planning board does have purview on signs, so um, it would be helpful if we could actually see what is intended for that.
And one more co- one more comment having to do with materials. Um, there are material samples that are available. I think they're, I think they're at the police station right now. But we will um get them and bring them down to Carby Street and make them available for anyone who's interested in seeing what the proposed materials, the brick, the um the stonework on the bottom um or or concrete work, what's being proposed windows so that people have a better idea of seeing in person the colors and the textures of what's proposed.
Thank you. That's helpful. All right, um, any other input from staff at this time?
Nothing at this time.
All right, um, then now I'd like to open it up to board member comments and and I do want to leave uh time for public participation. I know we have a lot of comments in the Q and A and I do see him phrase, so um, we'll do board member comments and questions and then we'll go on to public participation. And Josh, I know you've had had your hand up for quite some time, so I'll start with you.
Actually, I propose that we take public comment first.
That's fine by me if that's fine procedurally.
I would agree with that. I think that would be useful. There's a lot of comments and I I'd be curious to hear some responses on the comments from the public.
Uh, Madam Chair, I just wondered, should we be making the same offer to the select board before we take public comment? Do they want to comment before we um take public comment?
Well, that's a good question. I guess I was viewing the select board as the applicant. Uh, but sure, I suppose if if the uh select board has any input they'd like to share, uh, I think we'd like to hear from you. And then Nora or Elijah, Amanda, procedurally, is there any reason we couldn't move to public comment and then take board comments after that?
No, that's fine, and I think that might be helpful. Um, I think planning board members and uh select board members may be interested in hearing from the public first.
For certain. Okay, great. So, yeah, that sounds great. All right, we will do that. Select Board, happy to hand it over to you for any comments or any um meeting procedural things that you all need to do. And then I would like to open up the floor to public comment and then we'll come back to planning board comment.
And just one more reminder for anyone who would like to make a public comment, you can do that in the Q and A. Make sure you put your full name and your address. If you're interested in speaking live, put your name and address in the Q and A and raise your hand and then you'll be called on.
Thank you. So Select Board, um, was there anything that you would like to share or any business that you needed to do before we were to move on to public comment?
I'm happy to move on to public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I see Pat O'Hearn has his hand up and I don't know if it's a procedural note.
Oh, oh, yes. Um, yes, could we bring Pat in to the room before we move on? Thank you.
My apologies, uh I don't have any comments at this time. So I apologize for inadvertently putting my hand up.
Love to hear.
No worries at all.
Pat, your comments are appreciated.
Thank you. Good to see you. And uh I'm just noticing, because I'm looking at the attendees list, it looks like uh Chairperson Privatera is in the attendees. Could we bring him back in as a panelist?
Yeah, I just brought him back in.
All right, thank you. All right, um excellent. So if there are no objections, I would like to open the floor to public comment at this time. I know we have several in the Q and A. Scrolling back to the top. Elijah, does it make sense for me to just start reading through these? I know, I think some of them, the address was put in after the fact. Um, or is it better if if? I know, I think some of them, the address was put in after the fact, um, or is it better if, if staff were to read them?
I'm happy to read them and then you can, you can answer them. So, uh, the first question is from Mark Ogden. I don't see his address there, but I think I saw it further down the line, so give me a second, I'll try to find it.
Forty-seven Windsor Road.
Thank you, all right, so first comment from Mark Ogden, forty-seven Windsor Road. What does the gable add to the design? It adds twenty feet to the height of the building to the neighborhood adjacent.
Don, can you answer that one?
Sure, um, again, we looked at the historical aspect of the original building there and even the building that. Uh, sits there now, uh, with the gable ends facing the street. And we are harkening back historically to that to try and add some character to the building.
Thank you, Mark's next comment. Is, are you meeting all of the required setbacks required by the town of Westwood?
So on the east side, in the west side, yes. On the north side, in the south side, no. Hence why we will be going to the, uh, planning and zoning. I forget the numbers right now. I think we're at twelve and a half and zoning is twenty feet.
Correct. Yeah, we're roughly twelve, twelve feet into the north setback and I think eleven, eleven and change into the south setback.
So for point of information, the zoning board of appeals will hear an application on this project on Wednesday, November thirteenth. And they will hear a request for, I believe there are eight variances that are requested. Uh, two from the side setbacks, two from parking setback requirements, building height, um, impervious area. Don't know if I covered. Okay, Mike Perkins, do you want to, want to speak to that?
There we go, uh, it's, it's seven, uh, variances that are required. It's, uh, both of the side setbacks, the pervious, impervious coverage, the building coverage, uh, the height. Excuse me, and then, um, parking setback distance as well.
Thank you. All right, the next comment is from Janet Ogden of the same address. OMG, are you kidding me? The whole meeting shuts the neighborhood out that abuts this property and you are not allowing us to speak at all. I think that comment was early on, not understanding that the, um, the procedure is for. The, the board to hear from the applicant first, then staff, then board members, and then on to the, the, uh, residents. So there is no attempt to shut anyone out. Uh, next comment also from Mark Ogden. How are you addressing the stormwater that extends to the neighborhood below? So I know there was discussion on that, is there anything, um. Uh, that you'd like to add about the stormwater management? I think that, I think this question might go beyond what's, uh, the stormwater that's coming off of the fire station site now. To fire, stormwater that's coming down Windsor Road, which is outside the scope of this project. But I don't know if Todd has, um, any comments that you can make on the ongoing situation that would be affecting homes on Windsor Road.
Todd can, I can. So, um, there are, there are many properties that drain down to Hillcrest and Windsor Road. Um, obviously the fire station is one of them. This project should take a considerable, uh, reduction in flow to Hillcrest. But there, there will have to be additional, uh, work. To, uh, either upsize the pipe or do some sort of mitigation for the, um. For that area, we are, uh, currently working, uh, we are doing a townwide study of flooding areas throughout the town. To, um, to. Develop a capital program to perform treatment, so this is on the list. Um, and, but this project should, uh, reduce that flow. But it won't, it won't solve all the problems.
Nora, I'll also comment too that in, since we've done, we've done some, um, some measures, like I said earlier tonight. They are by no means like permanent fixes. However, the measures that we have made, and again, Phil, you can attest to this as well. We haven't heard anything of any issues. We've gone down there, we've observed during significant rainfall. And be it they were minor, like mitigating efforts that we made. Um, rather than like Phil was alluding to, there's obviously a bigger, broader picture. But since we've performed those measures and that was well over two years ago, we have not had any issues down there. Not to say that there isn't an existing underlying issue capacity related. But currently right now and as far back as almost two years ago, haven't seen any issues like we were experiencing prior to us making those mitigating efforts.
I think when we get to, uh, residents speaking live, you might hear that there have been some more frequent, more recent ones that maybe have not been reported.
And that's, and, and I, I wouldn't debate that and I, I'm welcome, I, I welcome those thoughts, those comments, because we need to hear about those. Because obviously we can't travel around every square inch of the town, but. Like I said, haven't heard any, but I, to any residents listening, we, I'd love to hear about them and. It is on the radar, as Phil alluded to, it's a very large capital repair that would need to be had and it's something that we're certainly looking into though.
So that's an opening from the next comment from Janet Ogden. What about flooding issues? Shrubs are not going to help with flooding issues we've had over the past five years. And then another comment, what about the traffic? What about our children's safety? You were all just talking to each other and of course you were happy with everything because you don't live here. This is horrifying that you would do this without our ability to speak. So comments again about misunderstanding that there would be an opportunity to speak. Uh, does someone want to discuss the traffic situation, um, further than what's already been commented?
I guess I, I'd just like to comment that the traffic study count that was done. It's been indicated to the working group and that's all I can really speak to here is that there's not going to be. A significant increase in traffic based on the project as proposed. That being said, we have heard from abutters and neighbors in that community that's saying there's an ongoing issue in this neighborhood. Specifically at Windsor and the light sequencing that, um, could be addressed further. And I think a recommendation of this group would be that we look to, to work with EPW to see if there could be, uh, a change in the. I never remember the exact word, the synchronization of the lights at that section. In terms of the pedestrian safety, we had a conversation with Officer Baker who's here today about. A, you know, a potential sidewalk in the neighborhood. And so Officer Baker, I'd, I'd ask you to weigh in here on what your opinion on that would be.
Uh, just going back to my previous comments, um. I mean, this is gonna be. This is gonna be man, we're gonna have a detailed officer on site, obviously for this project, because again, this is gonna be a big project. There's probably gonna be a, a minimum of one officer. So any concerns at that immediate time would be addressed. And the officers on the detail would like come up with a management plan on how to coordinate traffic safely around the neighborhood. And safely around High Street. I mean, we'd have, we'll have more to go off of once, uh, on the final planning stages of the project. So we have a better idea of what we're looking at. But we'll, we, we're gonna make it work out, so that's safe for everybody.
I think, and I don't mean to speak for this resident, but the, that they may be asking about, um, ongoing. So after the construction, I know we've talked a lot about, you know, limiting the hours of construction, managing the queue for, you know, trucks. Having a detail officer in place. But the, the building is built, the ongoing, you know, traffic in the area is a, is a sidewalk in that neighborhood warranted?
I mean, if, I, I would say a sidewalk in every neighborhood, obviously. I mean, it comes down to like budget issues of whether or not, uh, the town has the, the appropriate funds to fund it. I mean, of course, no matter what street it is, it's gonna be motor vehicle traffic. And sidewalks are a safe alternative for pedestrians to move along those public ways. So I would, I would recommend a sidewalk. Do I think it's absolutely necessary? It, it's not like a cut through street. So, I mean, I don't live down there, so I don't know the daily volume. I can always do a, put a sign down there to see what the volume of traffic is and whether or not it is, uh, necessary to install a sidewalk. But I would always err on the side of caution, say yes.
Thank you. Um, another comment from Mark Ogden, please provide the decibel level for the generator.
Yep, which, which is something that, uh, we will be doing.
Thank you. The next comment is from Natalie Marsh. Um, I don't believe I saw Natalie's address.
I think it's down below, I think it's seventeen Oxford Terrace.
Thank you. All right, so Natalie says, per our letters, abutters are extremely concerned about the extreme size of the station. Specifically removing the driveway access from front to back of the building. Sidewalk simply is not enough. Specifically to do this, we would like you to replan the maintenance bay to be moved. Permanent option where temporary housing is proposed. So building can be shifted over, leaving space for driveway to remain. Abutters do not want construction vehicles or trucks parking on our neighborhood streets. And would like noise, trash and appropriate screening monitored throughout the two plus year process. My final thoughts, the amount of land and space at Deerfield really should be the site. There is so much space and it is right next to the police station. As a resident paying one tax bill, we need the different town departments to work together better versus the previous responses of that's a school committee building. Now more than ever, we have to collaborate. So maybe we could take the last part of that first, if someone wants to address the, uh, Deerfield site?
Molly, is that something you want to address or?
I was actually, sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. You know, I was hoping to hand that one to one of the members of our select board.
Um, I'm happy to handle that, Molly, thank you. Um, that's an excellent question. Unfortunately, at this time, uh, we are not able to pursue that area for the fire station. Because as Molly said earlier, that's still under the control of the school department. And they can't make a decision at this time as to what their future plans are without some additional studies. And we certainly respect their opinion on that.
And then could we just recap what was said about the option of, uh, putting a maintenance bay at another location? And in this instance, specifically at the location where the temporary housing is proposed at the American Legion site?
That I am happy to take. So housing it at the American Legion, uh, has two sort of separate issues. One being, we're not sure what the long-term use of the American Legion is going to be. Our staff's gonna be moved there, is it gonna be used for public space? We have a facility study that is going concurrently that is looking at all of these different options. So there's the one problem of, we don't want to commit to building, uh, a large. Facility on a site that we don't know what else that site is going to be used for. And then the second part of that issue being that that site is positioned directly abutting and on top of wetlands. Creating, uh, mechanics bay for the size of the apparatus that it would need to work on, the fire apparatus. Would involve digging quite deep into the ground and would potentially be affecting those wetlands. So those are the two major concerns with housing, uh, mechanics bay at that site.
And then, uh, the paragraph, uh, speaking of noise, trash and appropriate screening monitored throughout the two plus year process. I think that could be addressed both through a planning board condition on the applicant's approval requiring, um, specific noise and, and trash removal. Requirements and we already have the earth material movement when trucks come and go with, with dirt, with gravel, there are requirements for that. I'd also ask Don, is there something that can be, uh, included in the bid documents that requires a certain level of cleanup at the end of a day?
Absolutely, it's, it's part of our specifications, uh, all the time. So that certainly will be in there and I should add that the site will be completely fenced in too. And, uh, we'll do it with a scrim sheet on it, so it's not just looking through a chain like fence, but there's a visual block also.
Thank you. The next comment is another from Janet Ogden. Stop, you haven't addressed your concerns, this is so unacceptable. Again, that was a, a comment from early on.
Nora, Mike had his hand up on the last question, I don't know if he had something to add.
Sorry, Mike, please go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna talk, Molly kind of address things with the, with the offsite mechanics bay. Um, you know, we, was addressed earlier, uh, regarding the additional cost. You know, it's not out of the question that it would be five, six, eight times more expensive to, to construct a separate building offsite. Um, and the analogy that I had used in one of our, uh, discussions earlier was that you, you, you know, if you had to. Go offsite every time to borrow a vacuum cleaner to clean your house, your house probably wouldn't be as, as well kept. So keeping things in-house where the apparatus are, um, is, is, is something that's advantageous to cut down on downtime. And also the cost of, of shipping things out offsite, uh, kind of subbing out the, the, the maintenance on the, on the vehicles. Kind of necessitates having something, uh, onsite itself.
Thank you. The next comment is from Julie Rosetti, sixty-eight Sterling Road. Super disappointed not to see the driveway from one oh nine restored. From my perspective, as a resident of the neighborhood serviced by Windsor Road. That is my number one problem with this plan for all the reasons that I and our members of our neighborhood have articulated in letters to the board. I find the conclusion of the traffic studies indicating that the removal of the driveway. Will not meaningfully impact our ability to enter and exit our neighborhood extremely hard to believe, given what we already deal with. And the extra traffic will definitely have an impact on pedestrian safety between Hillcrest and one oh nine along Windsor Road. I know it is hard to pivot away from the design when you are this far along. But it does not seem like anyone is giving serious consideration to revisiting this aspect of it.
You know, I was gonna say, if I could jump in there. I, I do believe and, and Chief can correct me that, um. The fire department personnel predominantly uses Hillcrest to park in, to get to the rear parking lot now. I don't know what the percentages are, but it's, it's not everyone, but I think. Anyone coming from the south certainly goes that way. And again, Chief can, if I'm misspeaking.
No, with the traffic in the morning, this morning, I went in that way. One thing I do want to add is nobody will be responding to incidents from the back of the station. Every emergency response is gonna be from the front of the building. So there's no one whipping through that neighborhood with lights and sirens on. The only time a truck is going down there is if needs to be serviced. And it won't be responding out of there. Um, I, I, I know that that was a concern about people thinking that we were gonna be responding with our trucks from back there, we're not. So.
And I would just, uh, piggybacking off of Chief's point, that vehicles, when they need to be serviced are going around through Hillcrest now. The driveway is too steep for those vehicles, those larger vehicles to go down the existing driveway. So that is not additional traffic, um, either.
It's, 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 it's more the, the swing, we can't make the swing to get down there, so we have to go around. Otherwise, we're on the other side of the road and trying to make it through and it's not safe.
All right, thank you. The next comment is from Janet Ogden. Hand up, trying to speak but cannot because you have disabled our chat, not okay that we cannot speak during this meeting. Um, the next one is from Karen Claff. I don't see Karen's address, Karen, if you can just type your address into the chat, I will come back to you. Another comment from Janet Ogden. Why are we even invited here? This plan is for the architects and those who want with. What about this neighborhood? We have an architect here too, who knows how bad this is for the abutters. Mark Ogden, it is a neighborhood not designed for public traffic, for public traffic. Janet? We are on seven Windsor Road. Did someone have something to comment on that?
I was gonna say, we have Karen's address now, Karen Claff, fifty, the Oxford Road.
Thank you. All right, so Karen, Karen says, is the individual signing above each bay something that is required? Or can it be eliminated for a softer, more classic feel on the facade of the building?
Don, can I give you that?
Yep, so this, this, this is something that we discussed with the, with the fire department. And it's actually, is very traditional to have different companies or apparatus identified over each door. And it's actually, is very traditional to have different companies or apparatus identified over each door. The, as I mentioned earlier, the individual raised metal letters that we're showing in this rendering will be changed to be more of a wood sign or placard that could be relocated, depending on how companies or apparatus move around the move around the station, and it's intended to be done in a classical style.
Thank you. Janet Ogden, and you are ignoring us. Mark Ogden, who is speaking beta? The beta comments came from Phil Paradis. Phil is acting as the consulting town engineer on this project. The next comment is Scott's iPhone. This is from Allison Miller at 20 Oxford Road. If more traffic just has to happen coming up and down Windsor Road, is there a possibility that the stoplight at the top of the street can at least be lengthened and better signage for those on 109 to not block the intersection?
I would say yes to both of those.
Yeah, I think we discussed at the last hearing, the proposal to paint the roadway with a do-not-block-the-box marking and hash marks in the street, which hopefully will be more effective than the small sign that hangs from the sign now.
Nora, we just completed that one of those tasks as well over at Islington, and they are very effective. There's one at Brookfield, and there's one now just beside the Muffin House to the entrance to that back lot there. So that's easily done.
Great. And part of that question had to do with the signal timing. I know it's the adaptive signaling that gives long priority to High Street. Is there any option to adjust that?
We are, we're still looking into that. You know, obviously, everything has a trickle effect. So if that's adjusted, now you're gonna have queuing that develops along High Street as well. So it's just, it's something that's, it's a moving piece, to say the least. We're in talks with a company that installed the adaptive signals. It's a very effective level of technology. But it's also something, believe it or not, that's still learning the habits of vehicular movement and where they're coming and going, and be it whether they're staying on 109 or coming off the Dover Row. But that does have an impact with the Windsor light as well. So it is something that's always evolving, and it's certainly something that we can continue to look at, try to adjust, and try to play games with. But just keep in mind that whenever we tweak one of the timing mechanisms, it's definitely gonna have an impact, whether it's going east-westbound on 109 or trickle back into other signalization. So.
Just to add to that, my experience is that a lot of the problem is not with the Windsor Road High Street signal, it's with the Gay Street High Street signal that then backs up traffic that blocks Windsor Road. So take a look at that signal and see if there's any way to maybe lengthen the flow of lengthen the signal time for a green light through the Gay Street signal before the Windsor Road signal turns green to allow a room for cars to come out. All right, next comment is from Mark Ogden. There is an issue. Oh, it goes on. Are you meeting the required setbacks? I think we did discuss that, that they are not meeting the side setbacks, and there are requests for seven variances to be considered by the zoning board of appeals on Wednesday, November 13th. Next comment from Mark Ogden. Our house has been flooded three times. So maybe we can hear some more about that in the live speaking. I know, Todd, you said you'd like to hear from residents who have had flooding issues. The next comment is from Carolyn Rogers Vizina at 31 Sterling Road. Please explicitly explain how inflow and outflow of traffic will be managed to minimize congestion and completely avoid pedestrian injury. Firefighter shift change is at the busiest time of the day, 8:00 a.m., when it is already hard to exit the neighborhood and when child pedestrians are en route to school. Windsor Road is narrow with no sidewalks and turning left off of Hillcrest has limited visibility. Moreover, the staff size can be expected to grow over time. Who would like to address that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm reading it again just to make sure that I got the full context. So explaining explicitly the inflow and outflow of traffic, I think Langdon was the provider of the actual study, so I would defer to them to how that would be managed. Firefighter shift change is busy at 8:00 a.m., that is 100% true. And so I think it's also been stated that, for the most part, firefighters are already parking via Hillcrest and not via High Street. So it's, that's what it has been, and that is what it is going to continue to be. The safety of child pedestrian, of course, is something we take incredibly seriously, and I would defer back to Officer Baker about his recommendation for how we should proceed, not just during construction, but ongoing. And the staff size expecting to grow over time, that is absolutely valid point. Right now, each shift consists of 10 firefighters. It's expected to grow to 11 in the immediate future, and so that would be one additional vehicle at shift change.
But that's 10 on the whole shift. There's only seven at Station 1.
That's, thank you, Chief. That's a valid point.
All right, the next comment from Mark Ogden, actually two comments that go together. Why do you need the gable? And how does the gable benefit the service bay?
Don or Chip, could you talk, what sort of mechanical features are housed in that area of the building?
The, yeah, the gable is not over the service bay, the maintenance, if you could tell them what the maintenance bay, the maintenance bay is different. So the gable doesn't benefit that. It really is something that, as I mentioned earlier, harkens back, harkens back to past stations located here, so look back historically in there.
Thank you. And I see a comment that Josh Ames would like to answer that live. Is that still an active comment? No, okay. All right. The next comment is from Janet Ogden. We are horrified. We have an architect in the neighborhood, and our questions are being ignored. So again, ignore, just different process. The next comment is from Paul DeMayo. Paul DeMayo's address is 40 Hillcrest Place, and Paul has his hand raised. So if we could give Paul permission to speak?
Do you want to promote the panelists or allowed to talk?
Allowed to talk, please.
I do like the panelist idea. So I do have a few comments here. You know, I like the Q and A option. And I just, I'm more of a talker. I live at 40 Hillcrest Place. I'm behind the fire station. I think anyone who knows where the fire station is and have looked at that area, you know exactly where I live, and you know what my concerns are. I'll just touch base on a few things. The flooding is not necessary. It's not gonna be fixed from the fire station. It's coming from somewhere else. You guys are gonna have to look into the street. Todd mentioned it. It's a very expensive project. It was told, I was told about two, three years ago that it was too expensive to fix. So I guess we're not important enough. So I took that. And has anyone read my letter of concern? You have? Has everybody on this panel? So we're aware that there were trees there three years ago before this baiting switch, where now those trees are now gone, and I'm being told we can't grow trees over here. So I really would like that part of it to be revisited. I'm seeing staggering, you know, arboretums over here. That's not gonna solve the problem. That's a 69-foot building. 40 Hillcrest Place is very interested in improving screening. And I mentioned in that letter that you could potentially take out some parking if you have to. You talked about seven people at Firehouse 1, Fire Station 1, and you've got 26 spaces, and now we're adding EV spaces, what, four or five EV spaces along the back? I think you guys need to make sure that there's enough room for proper screening. I think, I share, you know, and obviously, we heard from the Ogden's, I share with their frustration. This just seems like a conversation between you all. You haven't addressed anything from the neighborhood. Just going on, and I'm happy to hear that there's gonna be fences around the dumpsters because that was not the case. When those trees came down, that wasn't the case. I looked at those for a year. They were moved from one side of the property to near my side, as close as possible. Every time I went out to my car, I was looking at a dumpster. For a year, he left those out there. And does anyone have a comment? And this is where I talked about, you know, on the panel, because I want to hear the answer, and I would like to respond. Does anyone have a comment of the former fire chief's actions as an agent of the town? Not going through the proper channels? And taking those trees down?
For anyone not familiar with that, during the course of the pandemic, the fire chief, former fire chief, John Deckers, inquired about having trees removed in order to install a trailer that he was interested in having to free up some office space in the Fire Station 1. And he was told by the town planner at that time that there was a process to go through, filing an environmental impact design review application with the planning board, and given the procedure to do that. For reasons unknown to me, the trees came down without any application to the planning board.
So as a result, now you guys are coming out here, and you're looking at what's there, which is not efficient. That was a Band-Aid. You're looking at that and saying, oh, we're gonna match this. Well, those trees were up over the power lines at the time, and I did, on my letter of concern, I attached some Google Maps, which showed what the trees look like. And if you haven't looked at the letter of concern, I really would encourage you to, because it shows Google Maps how big the trees were versus what it looks like now. And it's really, when you look at where the entrance is, and you see the telephone pole, you can really see the height of those trees. And then when you look now, you look at that telephone pole, and I'm looking right at this building. This is a small building compared to the building you guys are proposing. And again, all I see in this plan you guys put together, you guys were allotted millions of dollars to put a plan together. And what you decided to do was make the biggest building and the biggest parking lot. And you did not consider the neighborhood at all. And I would really like you guys to go back to the drawing board as far as the screening goes surrounding this building, because you can't have it all each way. I pay property taxes. You want to look at what the property taxes are? The taxable value of the homes on Hillcrest Place? Well, when those trees went down, my resale value went down. My property taxes did not. They went up. So you can't have it both ways, guys. You gotta take care of the neighborhood. And I just don't hear that tonight. I don't hear that from anybody. And that's just, I'm a passionate guy, and that's what this is right now. We're just, we're listening to you guys talk. So I'm glad you listened to me talk. Thank you.
Thank you. I do, I will speak for myself, not for the board. I appreciate you taking the time to come and share your thoughts with us. I'm glad that we're taking public comment before the board has its discussion because I'm finding these comments very helpful for my thought process. And I think it's useful for all of us. So thank you for your patience, waiting for the previous part of the process to play out this evening. And thank you very much for your comments.
And I'm still on good. So, and just as far as, you know, the trees go, I really would like you guys to revisit the space in there. And I did mention possibly moving some parking spots, and I know you guys are so far along with this design, but it has to be entertained. I mean, you have so many areas around, surrounding, you've got local businesses. I'm sure the funeral home would be willing to, you know, not speaking for them, they'd be glad to give you four spots if it meant more screening. You really don't need 26 spots back there, or minimize, or shrink the building. It doesn't seem like you're willing to do either. So let's look at the parking lot. Let's look at the parking lot, make it smaller. Build in the buffer that, when I purchased this house 23 years ago, I've been here 23 years. When I purchased this 23 years ago, I had a significant buffer. And again, I encourage you to look at the pictures of what was there versus what happened to me three years ago. And for two years, for two years, I looked at dumpsters, and for one year, I looked at the station completely without anything there, nothing. And he dragged his feet, and then he put a fence up. So now we have the dumpsters on the other side of the fence, put some trees up. If I'm in my, right now, I'm in my upstairs room, I'm looking right at this building, the whole thing. The lights go right in my, right in my windows. You know, I mentioned concerns about the lights. We're gonna put the lights lower. Well, can we call an electrician now? Why don't we lower the lights now? I just, I don't, I had been ignored. I was ignored of the water. When I talked to the water, we put a lip up around my property. Again, it's too expensive to do what you really need to do. So again, we pay taxes, and we're just being ignored, ignored, ignored in this building. It's aggressive. It's aggressive. And again, it does not take the neighborhood into consideration. And if you guys want to take this plan, you want to take this plan and try to get it approved. We are gonna mobilize. This neighborhood's gonna mobilize, and we're gonna make it difficult. And everyone's gonna hear about how big it is and how unnecessary it is to be that big, and the fact that you did not listen to the neighborhood once. Thank you again. I'm gonna end now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And again, I think I can only speak for myself, but I think it's fair to say everyone here is listening to your concerns, and I am very grateful that you are willing to share them with us. So yes, thank you for being so candid. The next comment is from Julie Rosetti of 68 Sterling Road. Julie responded, this is in response to the question about elimination of the driveway from High Street to Hillcrest. I heard Molly's discussion, but still think this needs to be considered further. Another comment from Janet Ogden. Chat is disabled. Another comment from Natalie Marsh. I'm happy to speak if that is easier as somewhere addressed. Natalie, 17 Oxford Terrace. And Natalie has her hand up. If you could give her permission to speak? I see Elijah has his hand up too. Hi, Elijah.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to note that it is 9:08. And just to go back to the previous public comment, if it helps with the visualization, I can share the street view for the before and after.
I'd like to see that. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
So this is the before of the street corner at July 2012, and this is it as of September 2023. I can go back and forth.
This is very helpful, Elijah.
Thank you, yes.
If you can take screenshots of this and add it to our meeting packet for.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
And I think it's also worth reiterating that the staff recommendation, as was mentioned earlier, was to choose a taller variety of tree, given the height of the building. So the screening concerns are definitely shared by the board.
Taller, thicker, staggered, and with no penetration between them, so that it fully blocks the view of the station. You cannot block the view of a 69-foot building from the houses beyond it, but you can give a view of the trees that takes the place of the building beyond it. All right, Natalie, do you have permission to speak now?
I did. I unmuted myself. Thank you for permission and your time. I just felt that my longer comment in the Q and A was towards the beginning, and some of those items were addressed. So I think it's just easier to just quickly say that, you know, our neighborhood did respectfully and resourcefully reach out with our concerns in multiple ways. And, you know, the driveway has nothing to do with our access. We really want to try to keep the traffic flow of our neighborhood. You know, if it's not improved, at least the same, there are times where that light changes, red to green, back to red, and I'm still in the same position on Windsor Road because of it being blocked and just because of the volume of traffic being favored to 109. So that cannot be stressed enough as the reason for the driveway, not like we're trying to use the driveway as residents. But, you know, we do feel like the beginning of this meeting was a little bit brushed aside, and there is some frustration, you know, that we took the time, we wrote multiple letters, screenshots of screening and photos. And I guess my question in response to what you and the team have thoroughly shared is I feel like we keep hearing, well, we can't move the maintenance bay, or we can't revisit this. At this point in time, on October 29th, At this point in time, on October 29th, what can we do? You know, the design has proceeded further beyond the point that these concerns would be addressed in an effective and efficient cost way. But here we are. What can we do at this time to try to find some collaboration between our concerns and the design? Because it doesn't feel that that was addressed in the beginning of this meeting. And just to reiterate, our question is on the height and the size of the building, which I have to be honest, saying that that meets the quality of other surrounding buildings on 109. It, it really does not. And there are other buildings that are not that high. So the size and blocking the entire driveway are concerns and our neighborhood's traffic and general safety for children. Those four items, how can we address those at this time?
Thank you. I do see Josh, you had your hand up. Did you have an answer to that or a suggestion?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to sort of reflect on what Natalie was saying. And, and you know, I do think through the beginning of this meeting, we were addressing many of the concerns that we've continued to hear, the flooding, the screening, the traffic patterns. I think, you know, she's, she's very correct with like, there is more to discuss here. And like, I don't think any of us are ready to vote on this tonight. So Natalie, this, this hasn't gone too far. That's what we're doing here. That's why actually I think we all agree that we'd really like to hear from the community before we sort of start to contemplate any of this and maybe go down a rabbit hole that, you know, maybe is of less value to you. But, you know, I wouldn't be so discouraged and so sort of dead set that nothing will change. You know, that's part of the processes is having these discussions and trying to find solutions. So thank you for speaking up, but I, I hope you don't feel to sort of cast aside, because like, that's exactly what we're doing here is to try to find some solutions to some of these issues. So that long way of saying, thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Josh. That actually, that means, that means a lot. And so do you mind if we talk about tangible next steps? So and maybe this is also my being naive and that this is one of the first processes of a planning board that I'm going through. So first of all, thank you for your response and thank you for listening. That really does mean quite a bit. And so now educate me. I am ready to listen and take it all. And you hear the concerns and the remaining questions in the Q and A tonight, then what happens? Because I know that zoning is coming up in, in basically three weeks. So what happens between now and then? And how are these incorporated between now and then?
Natalie, I'm going to echo Josh just for a moment. Could you just share with us how much input you have had, if at all? Or if there have been a butter's meetings, community meetings and how, how much input you feel you've had?
Sure. I attended the in-person meeting in early September, I think it was the sixth, at the library. And then the Zoom prior to this. And then our neighborhood met and wrote those letters and then tonight. And I'm planning on attending November 13th as well. Subsequently, on, on different items, I've attended Pine Hill School meetings and those type of town planning things. But not to the intricacy of following one issue ongoingly as much as I have this one. And I think the other thing that, that came to mind is the night of the meeting in person at the library, which I also spoke at and introduced myself. There was a pedestrian accident and Windsor Road was blocked at High Street for quite a while. So, you know, I parked and walked up instead. But it made me think twice about that driveway as you were reviewing the design because our neighborhood would be locked in should that ever happen. And there not being any other access points to 109. So for that coincidentally to happen, the same night you were reviewing the design with no driveway was not lost on me.
Thank you for that.
You're on mute, Phil.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to echo Josh and just say, thank you for the feedback. I'm going to have further questions later.
Yes, thank you. I also appreciate you taking the time to be here and to share your thoughts with us. Because I think our discussion after we finish with public comment will be quite robust and well-informed by everything we're hearing this evening. Kate, yes?
Yeah, thank you. So I did also want to echo my gratitude to the residents who've spoken thus far. I, I do want to mention, you know, the select board and the planning board, we are your neighbors. So, you know, I've heard, I definitely am hearing some frustration with the process. But, but I hope people would understand that, you know, we, we are neighbors. We all want to live in a really nice town together. And I do just want to share, I, you know, I'm sensitive to my neighbors in Westwood and what their experience of living in this town is like. I do just want to mention that the building we're talking about is a fire station. And, you know, I'm a person, this is something a lot of people don't know about me. I'm a person who lost their home as a teen to a fire. And it was, you know, the middle of the night. And so I, I don't ever want that to happen to a Westwood resident. So I'm, I'm very much aware of what your experiences are, what your neighborhood is like. But what I want is for this group of people to be able to come to your house when you need them. And, you know, I get very emotional. It is super important to me that, that our first responders are able to respond well and quickly. So, you know, we're, we're hearing what the needs are to, to provide for you and your generations to come through this building. I definitely hear the, the tension between what that looks like and that it's not ideal and we want it to be great for everybody. So, so as your neighbor, this is what I'm thinking about as I'm hearing what everybody's thoughts are on this. I just want you to know, we take everyone's thoughts very, very seriously. I also take your safety very, very seriously. I'm also on the Ped Bike Advisory Committee because I take pedestrian safety very seriously. I'm not, I'm not here to just say no to your ideas, right? That's not why I'm here. So I, I want to say thank you. And this is serious business for us. We try to do it as lightly and gently as possible, but this is serious business. So thank you for your participation. Thank you for your patience. It is a process that we've inherited. You know, none of us designed this from the beginning when we got into this. So please continue to be patient, continue to advocate for yourself, but understand there's a tension between the things that are good for you that the town is trying to do. So, thank you.
Yep, definitely. And Kate, I'm so sorry that, that happened. But just to circle back, because I do want to meet myself, I know there are other people who have questions who want to speak. But I did ask a question about tangible next steps. And what does that mean? Just so I can ensure the next meetings or the next things, I, I will be ready to listen and hear what your thoughts are on this. So what are, what are the next steps after hearing tonight's feedback?
Thank you. That is an excellent question. Nora, should, should we address that? I see Rob Gotti has his hand up. Who is the best person to address that?
So I think there are next steps by the planning board and there are next steps by the applicant. I think you probably want to hear both. The next steps by the planning board are to send the project back to the applicant and request completion of updated plans, updated reports. And for the applicant to take all the comments into consideration and see what changes are possible. They dive in a little bit deeper than, than they're able to do tonight. From a planning board perspective, there will be another meeting offered at the end of this discussion. And we'll have to evaluate whether that's a possibility or not to be able to revise plans and speak again before going to the zoning board of appeals. If that's not possible, I would recommend that the zoning board of appeals either make their decision, whatever it may be contingent upon the planning board's approval, or they, they hear the beginning of an application and make a continuation of that hearing as well. So I think, I don't think we know the concrete next steps yet, but we do know that the planning board, after further discussion tonight, will look to the applicant to provide revised plans reflecting some of the concerns raised here.
Thank you. Thank you, Nora. Rob, I saw you had your hand up.
Thank you. So just a couple of comments based on some of the things that I've been listening to here. You know, one, the, the building itself is being designed based on the programmatic need of the department. That being said, what I'm hearing with respect to the ability to enter and leave the neighborhoods that are serviced right there at Windsor is there's, it's a single choke point of entrance and egress onto the busiest road on this side of town, which is, you know, awful during your morning and evening commutes, I'm sure. So I guess one of the questions that I have that we may want to look into, is there another point that we could get access out onto another road to create an alternative entrance egress point? And I don't know if that's connecting, say, you know, Oxford Terrace and Harwich Circle or taking Sterling Road and connecting it out to High Rock Street. But, you know, you've got, I would guess, and Nora, you may know the, the number of total homes, but it looks like there's probably 50-odd homes that each morning and each afternoon are trying to get into and out of that neighborhood onto a busy 109. So, you know, it sounds like the incremental traffic, based on the fact that the chief says the shift change is coming and going on Hillcrest currently is nominal. But the fact that you have that choke point at 109 is really the substantive issue that maybe we can find an alternative way to solve.
Thank you, Rob. I see Mike Perkins, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just, to answer Rob's question or, or comment, there's, there's 53 parcels that are quote unquote landlocked in that neighborhood. There are upwards of about 650 homes in Westwood that are on similar dead-end streets spread throughout town. And there are one, two, three, four, there's at least four that empty out onto 109. So it's not necessarily a a unique situation. It is one that I think is exacerbated or is being brought to the forefront by, by this project here. But there are a total of 53 in this neighborhood. And then the Birch Tree neighborhood just next door, there's 38 there as well.
Thank you. I see several more hands up. And Nora, it looks like we have a few more questions in the Q and A.
Yes. So the next, the next comment is from Janet Ogden. She says, are you serious? I would love to have you live here and make those statements. I don't know exactly what she's referring to, but I see that Janet has her hand up. So I think this would be a good time to bring her into the chat and allow her to elaborate.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about this because all night I've heard you talk about all the great things that you think this neighborhood can do and how it's so easy and great and easy to get in and out of. And the reality is, we have barely two cars that can get out of this neighborhood when we have our traffic light green. Most of the time, we have our intersection blocked by people who just come across our intersection. And I, I just find it remarkable that you think this is so easy and so great that it's not a big deal, but it is a huge deal. And Paul DeMayo, he articulated all the problems, plus getting in and out of one access. I'm trying to understand how you guys are all making this sound like this is all so great and good when it's not. It's really not. And you're just ignoring us. That's how I feel. We in our neighborhood feel that you just don't even understand how bad it is to get in and out of this neighborhood. So would love to hear your responses to this and how you're going to deal with the problems we have once this new fire station comes in. And if you remove that additional access in and out, and it's going to be all Windsor Road, how are you going to handle that?
Thank you. Is there anyone who can address, those are very specific questions. Is there anyone who can address those concerns?
I think as I just said, you know, I don't think anybody's making it sound like it's easy, right? That, that traffic that you experience on a daily basis is not due to the fire station. And it's not due to the fire station.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You live here, so you know, right?
I live close enough, but I see it.
Really?
Mm-hmm. And, and I'm coming up with potential alternative solutions to try to address that. I just, I just gave you two or three ideas.
I want to hear your solution because we have one in and out.
That's right. I suggested creating an alternative.
To get out of our neighborhood. And now you're saying we're going to have twice as many people coming in and out through the fire station because you're going to remove the access from 109? No, just tell me. No, I want to understand because our whole neighborhood is listening right now. Tell us how you, who live here, understand how bad this is and how dangerous it is for our children. Just tell me. Go ahead. Tell me. Go ahead.
They, according to the chief.
Oh, according to the chief, who lives in our neighborhood. Go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Ogden, so this is Chinlin with Vertex. And so what is clearly not on the, from the design team, looking at the problem is that
You realize I live with an architect, right? So we understand what architecture does. So tell your design
The, the, what I'm realizing
Going to save our children from the accidents on 109 and how they're going to get in and out. Tell us, tell us, please, please, tell us how you're going to do.
If you didn't realize that more, he could tell you.
And, and I think that if you can give us some time, that we do have the traffic engineer that they are
The traffic engineer that sat there for like two hours and didn't even understand how dangerous it is for our children. Go ahead, tell us. Two hours.
The, give us some time to, that I hear your prop concern and issue. And I hear that this is the issue of the, the, the intersection of the Windsor Drive to 109. And I would like to ask you, give us a little time that I'll go back to the design team and looking into this. We do have a traffic engineer on board to see what are the potential options that we can do.
Thank you. And I do see three board
To fix this because we can barely get one car through the intersection when the light turns green. So tell us how you're going to help our children and our cars get through this when you have twice as many people coming into the fire station currently that you're proposing. I just want to hear this because all night long, all I've heard is all the great things that you guys think you can do. And you have barely hear, heard what this neighborhood goes through. I'm sorry, but I'm speaking on behalf of the entire neighborhood. We've barely been heard tonight. All I've heard is all the wonderful things that you think you can do. But there are so many things you need to understand that this neighborhood could go through. There's one in and one out. We can barely get two big vehicles through this intersection. We constantly are blocked. You heard from Paul DeMayo about how much it's been an issue from his viewpoint. I'm just, no, 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 don't stop, just stop.
I understand your frustration.
All I've heard tonight is all the benefits to this neighborhood, but I have not heard any feedback from this neighborhood beyond me, who you've allowed me to speak, and I thank you for that. For all the issues we get, the flooding, our children, the traffic. You guys keep pushing forward your initiatives without hearing our concerns. I'm gonna stop now, and I'm gonna let you all talk, but this is not okay. And it's very frightening for us in our neighborhood, and we feel like we're not being heard, which is why we all got together and wrote all these letters to you, which you're minimizing, in my view, because you think, oh, we've got it all figured out. My husband's an architect. He has written how many comments tonight, which you've minimized? And I need you to understand that we are not stupid. We're not ignorant. We're not dumb. We know what you're doing, and we know that you need to push something forward for the fire station, which actually, most of us support. But we're just asking us, do you please think about our needs as well? That's what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you, and I think we've said we do appreciate everybody coming. I mean that. I am listening. Again, I can only speak for myself, but I think many of my colleagues have expressed, you know, similar gratitude. The people have been, they've made the time to come here and share their concerns, and I am not minimizing anything I'm hearing. I'm taking it in, and I encourage you to stay for the board discussion, because my colleagues historically have been very concerned. I think everybody on this call is interested in the resident feedback, and I am grateful to hear everything everyone has to say. I I don't think I would say that I don't care, or that I'm minimizing what the residents are saying, and as far as trying to address it, I think that's what this board will attempt to do in our conversations, to see if there is something we can do to work with the design team and the applicant to address what we're hearing this evening. I do see two of my colleagues had their hands raised, or three at one point, but I saw Phil and Kate and Josh. Phil, if you'd like to go first, I saw your hand.
Sure, I'll just jump in. I just want to reiterate for Ms. Ogden and for all the participants, the reason that we are doing public comments before the board comments is because this is your forum. Believe it or not, we are listening to you. Believe it or not, we are trying to do the best situation with what is a fire station that has to be replaced. It is a safety hazard. Our first responders are in a facility that must be replaced. Of course, there's gonna be give and take. Of course, there's gonna be differing views, and we are highly sensitive, which is why we are going through all these comments and spending a great deal of time and attention, and are sensitive to your concerns. Balancing those concerns is not an easy task. I hear many people saying that it is that we are either saying that we are, think it's easy or something like that. I will just say personally, I've already spent hours looking at documents and trying to understand this. Rest assured, we are putting in our best efforts on behalf of the town, and specifically on behalf of the abutters. So we're we hear you, and we're going to do our best on your behalf.
Thank you, Phil. Kate, I saw your hand up as well.
Yeah, thank you. I do just want to mention, it is not the same thing. I am not suggesting that I live where you live, but I do happen to also live on a cul-de-sac that has just the one entryway to a major route to leave. So I do understand not exactly your frustration. I understand my own frustration when there's something blocking the way there, and it's, you know, I'm right off of Washington Street, so traffic does back up right where I am. It is not near what you guys experience, but what I think we're hearing, and this is really helpful, is there is a real traffic problem for your street right there, and it is impacted potentially by the fire station, but it is not because of the fire station. So I just want to separate those things out as much as we can. We've certainly identified across the planning board and the select board, and everybody who's here, you know, really highlighted, there is a huge issue that, you know, goes without saying how important that issue is, but it is impacted by the fire station, not because of it. So I do want to separate those out as much as we can, and and I think it is important to have, you know, I'm all about emergency preparedness, emergency exits. I'm a person who backs into my driveway because I want to be able to leave quickly. Like, I'm all about having an escape route, so I want that for you and your neighborhood, but I do view it as separate from the fire station project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Josh, I've seen your hand up as well, unless that moment has passed.
No, I just, you know, wanted to make sure Ms. Ogden, you know, understood that this is why we're having these procedures, and this is why we're discussing this, and this is why, I'm sure, to the chagrin of of some of the architects and the designers, and potentially even some of the other town staff that would like to see this move more quickly, that like, we're trying to do our best, you know, to address these issues, to synthesize the formal and informal feedback and provide our own perspectives on these things. And the other thing I think Ms. Ogden brought up that was quite good is some of those, you know, negative externalities that already exist, in that, you know, she's shining, you know, the whole neighborhood is trying to shine a light on. Again, I think it's important that, you know, what Kate said, what Rob said, that, you know, this problem is agnostic of the fire station, the the driveway that has been used as a Band-Aid has potentially maybe created a little bit of relief, it sounds like. Again, I'm not familiar with, you know, the exact traffic patterns from the neighborhood, you know, maybe sneaking out once in a while. But I think without a question, it sounds like there's a traffic issue that we need to address more holistically, as well as you know, stormwater issues that, you know, hopefully have already, you know, started to been addressed on a superficial level. I do actually think that the design will create a massive benefit in terms of the contributions from the fire department's parcel into that flooding, because it's not just the impervious surface, but it's also, it's a grade of what, twelve feet from the front of that driveway down. So, you know, that water is actually moving quite quickly and creating a lot more, you know, flooding issues, but again, I just wanted to say, we are not minimizing this by any stretch of the imagination. I mean, we already knew before this that it's gonna go into a third continuance. We're gonna talk about this again. There are gonna be more, you know, iterations of this. This is not, hey, the plan is static, we're not changing anything. I mean, I still have more questions about other environmental concerns myself, so we are far from done here, so.
Thank you, Josh.
So the next question or comment is from Susan Fallon at Thirty-Seven Windsor Road, and Susan says, "I can attest to water flow through our properties and impacting properties surrounding ours." Susan also has her hand up, and we could invite her to speak.
Welcome, Susan.
Hello?
Hi, welcome. We can hear you.
Thank you for having me on, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I know it's been a lengthy discussion, so I don't want to take too much of everybody's time. I think we're all in agreement that there is, the fire station does need to be rebuilt. I think everybody agrees with that. I think we also agree that, like Kate said, you know, safety is the most important thing, the safety of the people in the town when there's a fire, but also the safety of, you know, traffic, pedestrians, all the other things that we take into consideration regarding our neighbors and our families. I know someone said that, I think it was you, Kate, that said that the traffic flow that we have on Windsor is a separate issue from the fire station project. And that may be true, but once you remove the egress, I think it becomes a non-separated issue. It becomes part of the issue. I actually, you know, I live at Thirty-Seven Windsor, so when you go down Windsor Road, I am the second house on the right, so I see traffic go up and down. I also see all the traffic go downhill crest. And I can tell you that I don't see, I watch from my kitchen window many times. It's not the pedestrians or the or the neighbors from our neighborhood that go up the egress, but I do see traffic coming from the fire station that goes right up 109. Whether, you know, it's staff or ambulance, or some of the building, the, you know, the vehicles from the fire station, it happens, okay? So I just want to attest to that. Secondly, I also posted some pictures, because everybody wants to see, well, what are we talking about? We talk about the traffic on 109 and also on Windsor Road. And Nora, would you please pull up some of the images that I sent, the photos? I don't know if everybody's seen them. And I just want to give you a visual example of what happens all the time, going up Windsor Road with many of us as we try to exit the neighborhood.
Just give me a second. I just realized I'm muted, but I was saying I have it right here.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so the first two images you can see there, basically on the left-hand side is is a construction trailer sitting in front of my house. And I appreciate everybody's consideration as far as finding off-site parking during the whole construction phase for any construction vehicles, because you can already see recently when they redid the back pavement of the nursing funeral home, that's where all the construction equipment parked right in front of my house, and we have a lot of children and pets that also sometimes get out of the house, and if there's a, like a ball running across the street, and a car's whizzing down Windsor, and there's a big you know, construction vehicle parked there, nobody's gonna see it coming, and it could present a big safety issue. So I know you've addressed that already, so I appreciate that. But in the second image to the right of that, you can see that the dump trucks also park at the top of Windsor. Today that happened, or the other day, that happened to be a dump truck, but it's very often, it can be FedEx, it can be landscapers that park there. When you look down below at the picture below that, that was today at around four o'clock, you can see, you know, we have our neighbors that have people that visit and park outside the front of their house. Or, you know, so what we see in that, in that particular instance, is a car parked in front of the neighborhood, or the house on the right, and on the left is that, that truck, it's a U-Haul truck, you know, parked on the left. As I was going up Windsor, and this just gives you an example of what we deal with, as I'm going up, I can't see, really see that car that's coming down Windsor, the one in front of it, and, you know, that's the last last picture to the right, and so I have to go around that truck just to make sure that vehicle sees me, so that I can get through there to get up to Windsor. So it's always a challenge, and I think the other thing I really want you to understand too is that I don't think you may not have an appreciation for, but when we come up Windsor, there are days when the sun is hitting us right in our eyes. You cannot see at all. You're completely blinded to what's coming down Windsor. And there are times when I have to go so slow, I'm afraid I'm gonna hit something. And if there's cars parked there, or there's a pedestrian walking, it can be very dangerous. And so those are our real concerns with safety, and to add more traffic and more construction vehicles coming down Windsor to go to Hillcrest to do the construction of the project, we're afraid. We're afraid for our pedestrians and for our cars. I mean, we've had accidents already where there has been cars parked on Windsor in front of homes, and someone's going up Windsor and hits it. It has happened. It's, part of it's due to the blinding of the light. We have, we have young children, not young children walking, but also we have young kids that are just got their licenses that are driving for the first time, and they're not aware of this. So there are a lot of concerns from the neighbors. I think I speak on behalf of all of them, and I just thought these images could help paint a more vivid picture of what we deal with on a regular basis. Thank you very much.
All right, the next comment is from Richard Carf of Fifty-One Hillcrest Place, or Lori Cohen, perhaps at that address. So, or Lori, their comment is and
You can't see.
All right, Susan, if you could just mute yourself as we go on to the next comment.
Actually, before we go on to the next comment, I do just want to say thank you to Susan. Appreciate it, thank you.
We like pictures.
Thank you. All right, so Richard or Lori has a comment, "And only one way out of our neighborhood, and not being able to see when cars come in and out of Hillcrest with large trucks, this is going to be so dangerous." And just to point out, I think part of what this comment refers to, if you're coming downhill crest, Hillcrest is a road that kind of comes down in a hill, and then you go up a hill to go out Windsor Road, and your sight is obstructed by the geometry of the road, and also by some vegetation on the corner there. Add to that the sun that Susan just spoke of, when you have the glare, it is a very difficult turn to make. The next comment is from Natalie Marsh. "Can you explain what the traffic study that Molly refers to entailed?" I think I can speak to that a bit, and then maybe John can take it from there. If you look on the meeting packet for today's meeting, which you can access by going to the calendar page of the town website, clicking on today's date, going to the planning board meeting, there'll be a link that's in there called Meeting Packet, and if you go there, you'll see all of the materials related to this application. And one of the materials that you'll find there is just find what it is labeled. It's called the Twenty-Twenty-Four Oh-Nine Twenty Westwood Fire Station Traffic Statement. This is one of the documents that the planning board is waiting to have updated. So this is something that was submitted prior to the last hearing. It was discussed at the last hearing. It talks about the traffic, that how the changes are expected to take place. It discusses that there are seven firefighters on a shift and five administrative staff at the fire department. So what that means is that at eight AM or soon before or soon after eight AM, seven vehicles with people coming to start their shift, their firefighters will come down that road, as will five administrative staff, and they will pull down Windsor Road and uphill crest and into the fire station. And then just after they arrive, seven firefighters that are finishing their shift will leave. They'll go out Hillcrest and up Windsor Road. So the traffic study takes into account that change at shift time at roughly eight AM, when those cars all come or go. The administrative staff, I believe, leave independently then in the late afternoon. Is that correct, Chief, around four-thirty or five o'clock?
Yeah, that's correct, but we may be parking up front, the assistant chief and I.
Okay, so three of the administrative staff members would leave, so it would be three additional cars around four-thirty, five o'clock in the afternoon. So seven cars in, I'm sorry, seven cars out in the morning, ten cars in, in the morning, and three cars out in the afternoon. That is the additional traffic that is discussed in the traffic study. All right, there's another comment from Karen Claff. Karen says, "The fire station access road from High Street is not about a source of relief for the neighborhood. It is about a large municipal building that will have to access its rear property through neighborhood streets. Our police station does have its own access road out to 109." Does anyone want to address that comment? I don't think there's anything to add there. I think that's recognize that, yes, the station is currently designed without a second means of entering.
That's not one hundred percent true even, right, Nora? I mean
I'm sorry, sorry.
Westwood Glen Road is also part of that parking lot.
So the police station has So the police station has an in route off of High Street and an out route through the, the um, Town Hall Parking Lot. Onto Westwood Glen Road and then back out to High Street, it's a little bit of a loop. So you get into the police station from one oh nine to get out of the police station, you cross the Town Hall Parking Lot. Alright, here's another comment from Richard Korf or Lori Cohen. That doesn't answer the trucks turning onto Hillcrest after construction. Um, so chief, maybe you want to answer that? At the current practice, I understand is that trucks needing to get uh, maintenance currently go down Windsor Road?
They do. Uh, it, it's. For them to come out of the, from the station and make the turn, it's just too sharp of a turn, the trucks won't make the turn. So we have to go down Windsor and then to Hillcrest.
And that would be the same condition under the new station that would be intended, that's to go down. Could you also speak to what trucks would be in the back? Would there be any engines or uh, ladder trucks that would be in the back of the station on a regular basis or only when they were being maintained?
Only when they're being maintained or if we go down back to do some training.
And there are two bays in addition to the um, mechanics bay in the back, could you explain a little bit about what those will be used for?
Ones to house our third ambulance, which is a mechanical spare. And the other one would be for the pickup truck or which we use for plowing.
Chief, could I also push you that in our current design, it's, the proposal is to have all of the rescue equipment. Rescue ready on the High Street side, so presently, some of our, you know, frontline vehicles are housed. In those two garages down back, um, and so.
Engine one, our spare engine, so if we had a fire or a lot of calls and recall people come in, they would grab uh, engine one. And which is parked down back and then um. Again, where that is, they'd have to respond out Hillcrest.
And currently the squad truck is housed in the back, so the, the current proposal is moving a lot of the frontline vehicles. That are currently housed, you know, out back on the Hillcrest side, moving them to the High Street side. So they're responding via one oh nine, not via Hillcrest.
Correct, that's the, that's the reason for the fifth bay.
Right, exactly.
Thank you. Uh, next is another comment from Janet Ogden WTF. Seriously, I'm so worried about our children and our traffic situation, you make it sound like it's no big deal. If it was your children, what would you do, really? I think that's just a more of what we heard Janet say live, she gives her address at forty seven Windsor Road. Uh, the next comment is from Carolyn Rogers Vizina. Following up on Mark's question about the gable, while I understand the concept of blending the aesthetic with the town. My impression is that the gable is unnecessary height, that at best gives the building the aesthetic of a public buildings version of a mansion. Why not omit the gable? Don, could you tackle that one?
Yeah, so one thing I, I failed to mention earlier on is the, the gable is also there to uh, install future solar panels. Being that they're south facing. So I neglected to mention that earlier.
Thank you, uh, next comment from Susan Fallon. Mike, I understand and appreciate your feedback, but we were told that the volume of traffic to the maintenance building would be minimal. But yet your comment seems to contradict that. Can you please clarify? Concern is that frequency of fire trucks coming and going for maintenance will be much greater than stated. Uh, so I'm not sure if that was.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think that was directed at me with my comment about moving the mechanics bay offsite, um, and I want to, the chief would be better uh, able to speak about. The frequency of trucks leaving and coming for the, for the maintenance bay, but just as a general, um, that it is, you know. Pretty evident that eh, between the cost of building offsite and, and the fact that. Again, depending on what the, what the, what the maintenance is, you may be having to ship these out to. Uh, another maintenance facility, private maintenance facility such as the, the Cummins Building in Dedham. Uh, or other places that, that would need to service things, so it's just a, um, you know, a couple of days here and there adds up after a while, especially on the. The first responder vehicles.
Thank you, Steve, did you have anything you wanted to add on the, uh, the timing, the frequency of?
It would be no different than anything we're having right now. Uh, it's not going to be an increase, we're not buying more apparatus, we're not. You know, we're not um. Adding anything as far as that goes. Having the maintenance bay there is a huge cost savings, I can give you an example right now, the mechanic. Through his relationships just saved us ten thousand dollars on one part, I mean, it's, it's huge, the, the cost savings that that. Produces for the, the department and the town.
Thank you, um, next comment from Richard Korf or Lori Cohen, this is a huge project and it would behoove. Oops, sorry, I just lost it, one second. This is a huge project and would behoove us to talk to the school committee. We agree to an override to build a new school, knowing that Deerfield would no longer be used. We should wait on this project, it could po- probably be cheaper to build out instead of up, Lori Cohen. Um, chief, do you want to speak to the Deerfield site even if it was available? How it is not suited for use as a fire station?
Yeah, so you just um, there's no access directly to one oh nine, so we'd be going through. Another neighborhood or going out through uh, Westwood Glen Road and. That would be not nearly safe as having a building right on one oh nine.
Another comment from Janet Ogden, do you really think people will pay attention to the blocking of our intersection? Uh, they could, they certainly don't pay attention to the small sign there now. I, I have seen the effects of the do not block, the box markings um, at Beacon Brook. Road and I'm hopeful that they would be uh, heated here to a greater extent than the sign is heated. Um, the next comment Susan Fallon has an address, would like to speak live. Susan, you've already spoken, so we're going to call on you after we've gotten to everyone else who hasn't spoken.
Yeah, that, that comment was made probably forty five, fifty minutes ago.
Okay, I see Susan still does have her hand up though, so if she'd like to speak again, we'll call on her as we, after we get to the end of the comments. Uh, the next comment is for, from Janelle Kelly at fifty Hampton Road. I'd ask to, please, I'd ask to speak, please. Uh, Janelle, I don't see your hand raised, but if you're still in the um, attendees, if you'd like to raise your hand. We will make you um, eligible to speak.
Nora, she has a comment below, um, at timestamp nine twenty six.
Thank you, sorry about that, alright, so another comment, given the time, I don't need to speak, but I'd like to directly respond to the need for the building. In all of the neighbors communication, we have reiterated. To support our first responders and build a fire station to support and protect our community for years to come. We are also asking for considerations from the perspective of our experience living here, thank you for the time for listening. Uh, next comment is from Kathleen Zapsek ninety one Oxford Road. This is to Kate Knee, sorry for your loss, but you said you take our safety seriously. Fifty families could be trapped during a major fire emergency in our neighborhood. That is why we need the driveway up to one oh nine to get out if we have to. Does anyone have any comment or response? Uh, Kathleen has another comment here, Kathleen Zapsek. It is so frustrating to hear you say that your hands are tied regarding the use of the Deerfield site. Because our school superintendent won't cooperate, that is awful for us to hear. How can our little town not talk to one another for the good of all? If you can't put the entire fire station one on the Deerfield site, you could look at putting the maintenance bay there. Um, so I just do want to clarify that I don't believe um. It was said that the school superintendent won't cooperate or talk to the town administration. There has been conversation, the schools are undertaking a facility study as is the municipal side of government. And we're waiting for the results of that study. If the Deerfield School is determined by the school committee to be surplus property, it will eventually be turned over the, to the town. And the town will have its um, feasibility study, facility study looking into how that property would be used. Um, it's not a, a ideal site for a fire station. Um, whether or not it would be a potential site for a maintenance bay, then we go into the, the items that Molly had iterated at the beginning of the meeting. About the um, the uh, the desire to have the maintenance bay onsite rather than offsite. And the cost of the additional um, construction project.
Nora, this is Chris, also the school committee has created a subcommittee regarding the study and the use of the, future use of the Deerfield. So there are subcommittee meetings, uh, that residents could attend.
And those, those are posted on the school website. Alright, the next comment is from Lori Cohen, I know that the firemen come in through the driveway and are always on Hillcrest Place. And how will you get fire trucks downhill crest place to work to the work bay? Chief Land?
We were already doing that, it's, it's how we currently function.
Thank you, uh, Kathleen Zapsek, last you said the construction work noise is allowed to happen. Monday through Saturday, seven A to seven PM and also on Sundays from twelve PM, I think someone said seven PM. So for two plus years, fifty plus families with one hundred plus children will be subjected to all this construction noise and safety issues. Um, I'm sorry, I thought that was Lori, it says Kathleen Zapsek at the end. Next comment is from Lori Cohen, there is an access road right by the police station that would create access. To one oh nine. Um, oh, there's, uh, that may be referring to, there's an emergency exit for police vehicles only to exit the police station. Direct to one oh nine, the parking lots in front of the police station and the parking lot behind the police station do not have direct access to one oh nine. Uh, another comment from Carolyn Rogers Vizina. Has the town considered buying out either of the abutting properties, the funeral home and residence to create a driveway? Would anyone like to answer that?
The select board has not entertained that idea.
Okay, we have a comment from Susan Fallon, all set, thank you, I think that was in reference to having a hand up, thank you Susan. The next comment. Oh, another comment from Susan Fallon, can I speak? Okay, um, so can we make Susan?
I think the one that she said all set was nine fifteen.
My comments keep jumping around, alright, next comment is from Paul De Mayo. I'm seeing twenty six parking spots are needed. My letter of concern encouraged the town to decrease the size of it in order to provide more room for screening and real tree coverage for Hillcrest Place. Are the two parking spot out front being considered in the building's needs? Can the need for EV parking spots be explained? Okay, so I can, I could speak to a little bit of that, the parking requirements for the building are based on the experience of the building. So a minimum number of parking spaces would need to be um. Seven for each shift, considering the two shifts are there for a short period of time together, so that would be fourteen. Plus the five administrative spaces, that's nineteen. There's a requirement for two handicap spaces, one in the back and one in the front, that brings to twenty one. There's just a desire for the uh, chief and assistant chief to have their vehicles up front. So they can respond to emergencies without having to uh, drive quickly downhill crest and up Windsor. So two of this, two of the um, chief and fire chief spaces need to be out front. A um, a handicap space needs to be out front and ideally we'd have at least one other space out front for people who are coming off the street. Desiring emergency services that they can get at the, at the fire station. In the back, the number of spaces that are required are twenty, nineteen for the firefighters and administrative staff. And one as a handicap space, that's all that's required. The uh, requirement for charging stations, there's a requirement the planning board has in its sustainability provisions. That all parking lots of at least twenty five spaces in size have to have one EV charging station. EV chargers are designed for one charger handles two car spaces. At a minimum, they would be required to put in that one charger which could address two spaces. We build for the future and we expect electric vehicle usage to increase, not decrease. So the proposal is for two EV chargers that would, that would address the needs of four cars at this point. Um, those EV charging stations are not in addition to parking spaces, those are among the parking spaces. So there is a minimum need for twenty spaces, including the EV charging spaces in the back. And there's a minimum need for at least four spaces in the front. Um, and another one is from Carolyn Rogers Vizina, may I speak, please, yes, um, if you could make Carolyn. Uh, give her permission to speak.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, and please excuse the two year old on my lap, um, who's also chatting in the background. Um, I wanted to say firstly, I completely support the firefighters and the need to have a new fully functional fire station. For their good and the good of the town, um, but I wanted to follow up on my comments this meeting and during the last meeting about pedestrian traffic. Um, let's be honest with each other, it's going to be a more sizable building with a twenty six space parking lot. Which means that there's a intention for more in and outflow to the back of the building in the future. All of that will go through our neighborhood and with an onsite maintenance bay, there may be more trucks coming and going through the neighborhood. Um, than are being serviced currently, uh, so I wanted to tell you about myself and my family. Um, we've walked thousands of miles through the neighborhood with our dogs and our two kids over the last ten years. And we really intimately know it as pedestrians, um, it is already a dangerous neighborhood and I worry about our kids. Uh, entering Windsor Road or like from High Street on to Windsor Road. I've nearly been hit multiple times by people who aren't from the neighborhood, turning left off of Hillcrest. Who just don't understand how poor the visibility is to that left turn and it's only going to get more dangerous with more traffic. Um, since we're sharing our lived experience as it relates to the project, I'll tell you, my experience is as a craniofacial plastic surgeon at Children's. And so I put back together kids' faces as my job and it's something that's personal to me. And as you dismiss the increased traffic as nominal, all I think of is how terrible it would be for my next patient to be a. Vehicle versus pedestrian accident affecting Evelyn, my neighbor, or Jack, or Eva, or Jackson, or William, Matthew, Willie. I think you get my point, um, you know, maybe I'm sensitive to child injury because it's my profession, but you know, this. Seems really dangerous and it's clear to me that there's no real recognition of the pedestrian issue. It seems like it was a total novel concept at the last um, planning meeting and I feel like there's no real plan for this. So I wanted to say thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for, for your patience and, and for sharing your experience and, and your concerns, we really do appreciate it.
I believe that is all the comments to date, let me just double check to make sure I didn't miss any.
For reading all of those and they were kind of out of order in some instances, but thank you for handling all of those as excellently as you did. Uh, I, I do see a few hands still up in.
Those legacy hands or?
That's what I'm wondering, okay, I'm seeing hands.
Sorry, before we move on, I did just want to say one comment to the, to the uh, speaker we just had. I, I, I really just want to say thank you very much for, for uh, for, for sharing what you did. I do want to let you know that you are not alone in feeling that way across our town. We have increased traffic all through town, right, on Hartford Street, on Canton Street. You know, everywhere and I, and I appreciate that you're in kind of a cul-de-sac community, um, but there are just. But there are just more cars, right? And and I'm I'm not minimizing what you're saying. I'm just saying. Everybody in Westwood is worried about our kids. We, everybody's thinking about our kids. So. The and I hear the need for, I'm hearing the need for a sidewalk and a real plan for what to do for for. This community, cul-de-sac community. But I am viewing it as separate from. You know, an offshoot of this fire station project. It's real. But for me, it's an offshoot of the of the fire station project and and I'm on Ped Bike. People come to our meetings every month and I would encourage folks to come to our meeting every month. This is what we talk about is keeping our keeping our pedestrians, our children, our our. People who want to age in place in town, keeping people safe and mobile. So anyway, it was great. Thank you. Thank you for bringing your comments.
Thank you, Kate. And I I do see Carolyn's hand go back up. I don't think that was a legacy hand. I think it went back up. Carolyn, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I I did. Thank you. Kate, the comment that these are unrelated issues, the pedestrian traffic issue and the fire department issue. I just have to say I I disagree with you. I feel like, you know, we're building a bigger fire station with a bigger parking lot. Well, actually, I guess technically it's smaller, but with. The ability to comment accommodate a lot of vehicles and saying, oh, no, there's not going to be more traffic in the neighborhood. Well, obviously, there will be. The town is growing. There will be more. Staff, there will be more calls, there will be more vehicles to maintenance. You know, they are related issues, you know. Yes, pedestrian issues are a problem all over town. I I see kids from all over town. But the idea that there will not be growth in the fire department with this bigger, better, busier. Facility is just not accurate.
Yeah, sorry, I do want to reply. They're kind of and and maybe we'll we'll. Put those two things together for this project, but they are separate processes, right? What the town does about sidewalks on streets that exist in my experience is is not part of a. A construction project necessarily, right? So you're not going to see it as part of the overall project plan. I haven't seen that. Maybe we'll do it differently this time. I I don't mean that they're not, you know, a hundred percent. Not a hundred, you know, they're they're not completely isolated, but they're separate processes, but but I'll let the experts speak. Thank you.
May I just to step in for a second, just on one decision, this that we do have. We do have some money in the in our. Budget to carry out the traffic engineer and so we can definitely utilize some of that money to. Look at the problem that has been raised by many of the the residents today. And certainly this is something that a traffic engineer is the right person in terms of whether it's a traffic signal. Modification or the line of sight in terms of visibility, etc. And so I definitely feel comfortable to say that we can direct the traffic engineer to do a more detailed review of the situation here.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very helpful information. Were there any other? I don't see anything else in the Q and A and I do not see any other hands raised. I'll give it one more second for. Addition. Phil, yes.
Just briefly, I want to just respond to Carolyn. Carolyn, just just so you understand. We spend as a planning board, a great deal of time on traffic issues, whether it's East Street, whether it's Everett Street, whether it's clapboard. Traffic is an issue in our town. It is an unfortunate fact of life. But the question is, how do we manage the growth? Because there is growth and we can't just ignore the fact that there is growth in vehicles. And that's why we are going through the process and that's why we are listening to you. I see it all the time in terms of various choke points that I often travel through. And this is one which recognizes that High Street is a heavily trafficked area. There is an incremental increase. There's a greater number of parking spaces. There's, but it's also. In some respects, planning, planning that, yes, there is an expectation that the staffing and the. Growth is going to be a function in part of the fire station. And yes, we are trying to, by hearing you and hearing your concerns, trying to manage that process, looking to the future as to what this fire station is going to be. That was, that was the only thing. I have. Lots of other comments, but it's very late, so.
Thank you, Phil.
Just wanted to do a time check that it is ten seventeen.
Thank you. And Amanda, I see your hand up as well.
Yeah, I figured since some comments have been related to just being unfamiliar with the planning board process. If people want to understand what types of things the planning board is reviewing and looking at this application. If you go into our zoning bylaw, which if you just search Westwood zoning bylaw, it'll come right up on the town website. Section seven point three point eight, there's five pages of standards for environmental impact and design that the planning board is looking at. And it covers everything from pedestrian safety to noise mitigation to architectural, well, not architectural, but. Native landscaping, all sorts of things. So if you want to understand that process, you can do that on the website.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other comments in the Q and A, nor am I seeing any other hands raised. So I think at this time I will close public comment. And move on to board member comments. Understanding that the hour is late, I will say I'm I'm I found all of that discussion incredibly valuable and I appreciate everyone's patience. There really haven't been a lot of opportunities for public engagement at that level, so I'm glad that we took the time to do that. So thank you to everyone present for. Sticking it out through all of that. I think that was really important. So I'm going to ask staff. What is the best way for the board to proceed at this time with board member comments? It sounds like we're going to be continuing our hearing. Should we go all in at this point or does it make sense to? Continue some of our discussion to the next meeting. Can you can you help advise us on timelines and and how we would best proceed?
So I would recommend that you do continue with your discussion, get all of the issues that have not been addressed so far onto the table. And give the applicant direction on what you would like to see before you discuss this further. I also offer a date to consider a special session, another hearing between now and November thirteenth. If the applicant believes that they can respond with some of the missing incomplete reports in time for that.
I was going to ask you, Nora, what is the process for if we chose to have essentially a a special meeting? In order to, because obviously we have, it's a late hour and there's a lot still to do and what what do we need to do if we scheduled yet another meeting?
You would just simply need to continue the hearing to that date and time.
And given the timeline, so the zoning board's meeting on the thirteenth, so we would be looking. At probably a week or so before that.
Yes.
Okay, which means we would need our materials at least three or four days prior to that date, whatever that date would be.
Yes, so if you could look at your calendars, the date that appears to be available for a meeting would be November seventh. That's a Thursday night if members have that free on their calendars.
Geez, it never happens, Nora, but I'm free.
So November seventh, but that would require the applicant to be prepared to submit all of the reports and final plans no later than Monday, November fourth. That's next Monday. So that's.
November seventh, but that's a tight schedule.
Yeah, I guess that's the the first question is, are all five of us available? I am. It sounds like Kate is and Phil is. Josh, could you do that?
Yeah, I can. I'm just, I'm not clear why we need to do that. I mean, it sounds like there's a mechanism.
So.
Z B A, right?
Well, so the the reason that you would be having that special meeting, if the applicant is is able to get you what you need to vote. You would do that so that you could send a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals and the zoning board of appeals. Could vote on the essential issues that are before them, the variances. Those are really the the most guiding factors. So the planning board's job is to determine. What this building will look like, how the site will be developed. You know, landscaping, lighting, stormwater, but it's the zoning board's job to determine whether that can all be completed. With the variances that have been requested. So that that decision is needed before the applicant and their team. Can understand if they if they can proceed on this on this project. If the variances are not granted, the project as designed simply can't proceed. So that's a very important information point that we need to get to and we need to get to it sooner rather than later. So that hearing.
What about the twelfth, Nora?
The twelfth is a possibility. I think.
To give the applicant more time.
It would give the applicant more time. We would have to change our presentation that we are. Ellen and I are scheduled to meet to the Fin, make to the FinCom on the twelfth. We would have to. Back out of that presentation if the twelfth worked for everyone.
So what happens if the Z B A can't hear on the twelfth or during that week?
If the Z B A can't hear on the thirteenth, their next meeting is on December eighteenth. That introduces an entire month of delay to the project and the project is in the construction. Design development stage. So that puts at risk the ability to have bid plans ready to go out in time. To get bids to be able to bring to town meeting with agreed upon price. So timing is is paramount in this application. It's it's everything is it's a complicated application and everything is very closely scheduled. As you recall, this was originally going to be a hearing that started on September twenty fourth. We already lost some time there when some plans weren't ready. And we had to put the meeting on October fifteenth. So we're behind the eight ball to start with. If we lose another month. We can hear from the applicant, but I I think that seriously compromises your ability to have bid documents. For a for a May nineteenth town meeting.
So I see Joe's hand raised too. Are we able?
Yeah, Joe.
Thank you. Nora, I'm sorry, but I was not aware that. You did not get all the reports that you folks needed. Can you tell me what reports are needed?
Yeah, so we need a final stormwater report. We need a sustainability narrative. We need an updated photometric plan. We need revised site plans, landscaping plans. I think we have the final architectural plans now. I don't think those are. Expected to change unless that they change out of comments from this hearing. But those those are the documents and materials we need. So so and traffic, we need an updated traffic plan. So traffic, stormwater, sustainability, photometrics, site plans, landscaping. That's everything that we. I'm sorry, but was that?
Noise, the noise.
Noise, noise report as well, right? And then there are there are other reports that can come after a decision that could be submitted before a building permit.
So just so it's clear from my mind, we're looking at the final site plan. Sustainability narrative, the photometric plan, landscape plans, the traffic study?
Yes.
Stormwater plan. And a noise plan.
Yes.
Nora, can Z B A go on the thirteenth and we go on the following nineteenth?
Yes, but Z B A, yes, Z B A would not be voting on the final plan. If they were to do that, what they would have two options. They could go forward and take a vote. To approve a plan subject to the planning board, any changes that the planning board makes coming back to them for a modification. Which again would put them out to December eighteenth, but they at least would have voted on the question of the variances. The problem is if the planning board makes significant changes to the plan, especially changes that could potentially increase any of those variances. Then the the Z B A's approval that they granted would not be valid to allow the project to go forward. So there there are ways to to work around it, but there are no ways that don't add time to the project.
Ellen, could I ask a question from a member of our team?
Absolutely.
Is Dawn still with us? Dawn, you heard the list of needs. Is that possible?
I I did, and I've been chatting in the background here. I I think bottom line is we need to strive to to meet the request. So. We'll see what we can do to achieve.
I don't want, I don't want them juggling their schedule. We can't pull this off. What do you need from us to get this done?
Joe, I can't answer that question.
All right, then they.
We need, we need, we need to leave tonight's meeting, regroup tomorrow and I'll know better then.
Okay, then you and I can connect at lunchtime?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Nora. Thank you, Ellen.
Joe, in fairness to Dawn, I don't, I mean, we still have to hear from the rest of the planning board. I I believe there's a whole bunch of questions that still exist from the planning board members.
Nora, as far as for our process, can we, we do not have to decide this evening if we're going to add a meeting. As long as it's properly noticed, we could communicate.
No, you need to decide tonight and you would need to continue the meeting. So if you if you chose the seventh or the twelfth, whatever date you choose to continue to. You will have to meet that night to open the meeting, open the hearing and either go forward with it if you've received all the plans or to immediately continue it to your November nineteenth meeting. But you have to set a time tonight and then you will have to meet at that time, whether or not the plans are ready.
Okay. I I'm I'm trying to be accommodating, but you know, so that we don't. Impact the schedule negatively, but that being said, you know, it's it's hard for me to. Make a positive recommendation to the Z B A on something like a variance about impervious surface without seeing the stormwater study. So I'm I'm kind of torn here. I'd I'd like to try and make an interim meeting. Work, of course, pending being able to get all the materials. Otherwise, there's no value add, but. Yes, Kate.
Madam Chair, what if we went with the twelfth? For an interim meeting, giving the applicant as much time as possible to pull together their materials and then if we can have. Something to give to Z B A that's has some teeth, we'll do that.
I'm amenable to that, Nora, if that works as far as our obligation to the FinCom goes.
Yeah, so I I don't think the FinCom has set their, the meeting's not on the calendar, so I'm not sure if it was planned for seven or seven thirty. If their meeting happened to be at seven o'clock, I'd ask if maybe we could. Go there for just a half an hour, give their presentation and then have the playing board meeting start at seven thirty. That might be a compromise, but I. I don't really have a way of confirming the time of that meeting.
No reason we can't start at seven thirty or eight.
And I'm happy to jump in here and work with Bill Bruce, the chair of the FinCom, and Michael Gay, the vice chair, to make sure that it works with y'all's schedule.
Thank you.
Helpful.
Pat, I see your hand up.
Yeah, it seems to me like. Like you have two dates here you're wrestling with and we don't have. We don't have good answers from the architect now, not because they don't want to give them to you, but because they have much work to do between now and tomorrow morning. So what you can do is you can schedule it for the seventh. And if you can pull it off for the seventh, then you can move forward. If not, you'll have to meet briefly on the seventh and continue it till the twelfth. Giving proper notice along the way with open meeting law requirements, but you can do it. I mean, that gives you kind of two bites at the apple, which I think I'm hearing you would like to have. But perhaps I'm misreading the rule.
Pat, should we notice both the seventh and the twelfth now?
I don't think you can do that.
Oh, we can't. Okay.
Only notice one, the the next continuation. So if it's if this, if it's the seventh, you continue to the seventh and if the team is not ready with their plans, you'll have to meet briefly via Zoom. Continue it to the twelfth and try again. If they're not ready, then you do the same thing again and continue it to the nineteenth, in which case. The Z B A would either have to make a decision based on interim plans or they would have to continue their hearing to December eighteen.
And if the meeting is scheduled for the seventh, we would need updates from the applicant team by November fourth, that Monday, so next Monday.
Right.
That's a question to Town Council. Pat, veteran stays on the eleventh. Does that?
Um, Pat, veteran stays on the eleventh, does that play into the proper notice?
Yes, it does. Uh, so you've got, you've got to add twenty-four hours to the notice.
So that would have to be on the seventh.
Yes, but we would, we would know on the seventh, we would know before that. We would know if the plans did not come to us by the fourth, we would know. And we would schedule our meeting, post our meeting um, for the uh, for the twelfth. And then convene on the seventh and officially continue it to that date. So our posting would be needed.
Thank you, Nora.
Thank you. Josh?
So what is it exactly are we looking for from the applicant to make a positive endorsement potentially? To the ZBA, even if it's an interim and we don't have the photometrics or, or something along those lines like. Can we prioritize what we're looking for so they're not trying to boil the ocean, for lack of a better term? Um, with the top three items or i- if we can, right? If, if everything's important, everything's important, but. Um, I, I think we, we could give some clear direction of what we need to see to, to give some sort of positive endorsement to the ZBA.
I think that'll depend on the comments that individual boardmakers make, board members make to see what it is you might want to hone in on. But at a minimum, your legal responsibility is to receive a final stormwater plan. And a sustainability report and a final site plan. You cannot vote EIDR approval without those items. There could be issues with the site plan that even at that next hearing, you say revise this, this and this, but you have to have the plan upon which to base that. Motion.
Nora, what about the traffic?
Uh, that's what I'd like to hear from board members about their concerns. If that's a gating issue, as it, as it certainly is for the neighborhood. Then I think that that would be an important uh, report to have finalized. Photometrics are important, but probably not decision related. Um, you could. You could have a motion that directs the photometric plan to make certain changes and receive that before building permit.
Thank you. Uh, Kate?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Nora, I think this is a question for you. When it comes to sidewalks. Um, it, what are, what are the parameters for what the planning board can request, can suggest? I mean, it is, that is not part of this. Project in front of us.
So you're reviewing this project as an environmental impact design review application. That does not give you the authority to require off-site improvements. If you were reviewing for subdivision approval, you would have that authority. You do have the ability to make a recommendation to the applicant as, to the select board as road commissioners. To uh, consider implementation of a sidewalk if you feel that's what's needed at that location. But that could not be a condition of your decision. It would be a dual track. You would consider the decision if you granted EIDR approval for a fire station. You would at the same time send a recommendation to the select board to consider adding a sidewalk.
Right, and it could be a strongly worded recommendation.
It, it, if I felt like maybe. We have all the select board members here. They've heard exactly what you've heard. Um, they know that the concerns of the neighborhood.
Perfect. Okay, I just wanted to make that delineation uh, really clear. So, so thank you. I appreciate it.
I will point out though, when we talk about sidewalks, keep in mind, every resident does not have the same position on sidewalks. And I would imagine that some residents who live in the Windsor Road area who were not at tonight's meeting might have the opposite view on a sidewalk. So it's something that the select board then would have to take into consideration and meet with all of the residents and determine what's the appropriate response at that location.
Understood. I do just want to mention that I, when it comes to the pedestrians, I had asked for um. Whatever can be done at the um, the rear to the, of the building. At that curb cut to make it as safe for pedestrians right there as possible. So that is something that I'd be looking for um, to have highlighted in any. Further plans.
Thank you, Kate. Sean?
I, question of process too. If we, let's say we weren't. We weren't able to approve a full plan because something's missing, but. We were reasonably verbally committed at whatever meeting is before the ZBA meeting to. The things that the ZBA would be considering, which are the setbacks, the dimensional requirements, the height, the impervious surface. How does that? Change the situation um, compared to us approving plans that the ZBA is able to look at? And not being in agreement on, and otherwise not being in agreement on kind of the setback dimensional requirement stuff.
So in that case, you could vote a sense of the board in favor of the project, send a recommendation to the ZBA. They could vote in favor of the project, but they would still be voting on the non-final plans. And it would still have to come back to them at a later date when the final plans were approved to modify their decision to swap out the plans they actually approved. For the plans that are going forth for development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it sounds like now would be a good time to open it up for board member comments so that the design team can hear. That conversation and get a sense of priorities. And then I think we should decide on which date. How we want to proceed with picking a meeting date. I'm, I'm amenable to aiming for the seventh and if that doesn't work, then we pivot to the twelfth. But I'm open to whatever my colleagues want to do. So with that in mind, um, I'd like to hear board member comments, questions, feedback on, on. What we have to review and what we've heard this evening. Kate?
Thank you. I'll just go back to some of the things that Nora said at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I'd love to see granite curbing. Um, I don't want all the ballards to be painted yellow. Um, I do want the, to switch out the trees that are recommended. And uh, I do want shrubs versus grass in the islands in the, in the rear parking lot. And um. And I do want the dumpster enclosure to be seven feet or eight feet high versus what they currently have planned. Uh, and those, I think those are, those are my thoughts that were specifically requested. I'm, I'm. Happy to see this moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I see Sean's hand.
Sorry, and I can do either plan for next meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have. Few items. Um, I've been cognizant of the time. Maybe this is better in written form, but a brief explanation of whether. Any alternative orientations of the building and maintenance bay were considered that would have retained the access road while. Fitting the programmatic needs on the site, just for our kind of reference and information. And maybe, maybe that wasn't possible, which would also be helpful to know. Um. I think uh, I'm in favor of us making a recommendation to the select board. Around doing something with traffic uh, signalization or synchronization, whatever the right term is there. I think that's really important here and it would hopefully go some way toward addressing the traffic concerns. If not. Probably wouldn't address all of them, but I, it sounds to me like it's a really big problem and there may be some solutions uh, that are on the table. Um, on the safety front, I, I think it'd be helpful to have a stop sign potentially leaving the parking lot just to. Caution cars exiting outside the back to Hillcrest to look both ways, be careful. And, and any other markings we might think would be appropriate and I encourage our planning staff to think about that if, if they've got other ideas. That was just one off the top of my head that may or may not be a good one, but it's one I was thinking about. Um. And you know, maybe there's some condition about on an ongoing basis, no, no fire station related vehicles or traffic should park on Hillcrest. Um. Question for the applicant, um, not to be answered tonight, but maybe in narrative form before our next meeting. How would any additional construction time restrictions affect construction schedules related to what the towns laid out? So if we were to say, for example, no construction on Sunday, um, i- if that is a condition we can make, how would that? Kind of change or impact things if we were to look at any other restrictions? I appreciate any knowledge or narrative there. Um. All right, a few things on scale and I, I'm moving to scale now of the. Project because I think it's most relevant to what we need to nail down for the ZBA. It'd be helpful to have the elevations in front of us. I'm wondering if the applicant team or Elijah or one of our staff can pull up. Uh, either the elevations or those renderings.
Chip, can you do that?
Yep, coming up muted, but.
With my comments. I'll, I'll preface by saying I, I heard a lot here from some of the attendees about the height of this building. I also. Um, I respect that the, the gable is, is. Both provides a space for the solar, uh, potential solar panels in the future, which uh, our bylaw does require some. A sustainability elements, including um, considering use of solar energy uh, within five years to power fifty percent of the building. So. That said, is there, I'm, I'm looking at sort of the roof line above the windows and above the gable. And it looks like there's sort of some extra height there to my eye, but I might, I might be wrong. And maybe, I don't know if that's because there's taller ceilings. Yeah, that's exactly where I'm looking at where the cursor is. That's great. Is there any way to take down like two feet or is it like just like, or is it not really?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt Sean. That's actually, you, you're seeing that height there. Because what's going on up there is the structure, the roof and all the mechanical ductwork uh, running through there.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that is, okay, so understanding that, I think just to, you know, it's a small visual mitigation of it. But if, if you can put some kind of a lighter color, a little bit more robust vertically and outward extended parapet. Or something on that, I, I really like y'all to consider that um, just to, just to make that feel a little smaller. Um, and that would help. Uh, let's see. I'm just going to keep throwing comments quickly. Uh, towns, um, it looks a little bit small to me, but. I trust your judgment, I guess. It also feels set a little too high. You can move it a, kind of a little more towards the center or set a brick course around it. To make it a little more framed, if it's cost effective. If not, that's okay. Just quick comment. Um. Let me, let me see. I'll, I'll uh. Let me get back to some of my other comments in a minute. I'm, I need to think for a second. Um, but overall, I want to say thank you for the spacing on the windows. I appreciate you spreading those out evenly. It looks nice. Um, I'm also, Dawn, to your notes, I'm supportive of your desire to make this. To kind of have sort of a contemporary cornicing on this, um, but something that's can still be really complimentary to what's in the area. Uh, complimentary is the key word to me. I think, I think we can have an aesthetic that's really respectful to the surrounding buildings while. While still reflecting the time in which this is being built. Um, I just want to make sure the cornices around the whole edge of the building have enough texture to them. To kind of feel a little more residential and not too institutional or industrial. So. Um, you did solve my pet peeve too on the gable and returns, not being too boxy, which I really like. So. I have a few more comments, but I, I need to pause for a second and also maybe take a bio break.
Uh, yeah, I think a bio break's a good idea. I'll, I see a few hands. I, if any, if everyone is amenable. I'd like to just entertain the hands that are up and then maybe take a motion for like a three-minute bio break, because I bet we could all use it. Um, I see Amanda, Mike and Phil. I'll start with staff and then I'll go to Phil. Um, Amanda?
Um, just a quick thing, because Sean's comment reminded me, there's a discrepancy. The elevation drawings, the most recent ones show. That the seal used on the back of the building will be salvaged from the old building, but then a response to commons indicates that that seal is being used totally elsewhere. And that those seals on the outside will be new. So just clarifying what is being done there, because the documents contradict each other right now.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Perkins?
Yeah, just to answer real quick, just to, or to throw my two cents in on a couple of the questions you had, Sean, uh, regarding the billing orientation. Um, kind of the, the, the massing, the, the width that building is, is obviously set by the apparatus base. And getting all those kind of facing out to High Street. Um, and there were very early on discussions about doing something different. And maybe having that drive aisle there on the side. The problem is then, based on the square footage of the building and the programming now, now you were adding height. And basically taking kind of what was on the left side of the building and stacking it on top of it. So now you're, you're adding almost another floor. To that or, or bumping out the back of the building, um, which ran into some other problems. There are also um. Some existing utilities that run along that south side. Um, namely the, basically all the phone lines for the, for the rest of High Street, south of the fire station. Run through that area, um, and can't necessarily be moved easily. Um, and as far as construction time restrictions. Um, you know, limiting work to no Sundays at all shouldn't have much of an effect on a schedule. Um, typically that's not, uh, you know, Saturdays are, are usually a typical workday. Sundays are very rare. Um, not saying they wouldn't happen. It's usually uh, later in a project when you're trying to make up a couple of days or something like that. Especially if you lose a lot of time there due to weather. Um, the other reason uh, you would be doing that or any type of off-hour work is, is. Utility shutdowns, tie-ins, things of that nature. So it's, it's kind of few and far between. So restrictions like that. Um, wouldn't necessarily uh, impact the construction schedule. The, the, the bigger thing that comes into play with restricting that is, is more. Uh, delivery times and, and receiving materials and things like that onsite, which is obviously going to be a big deal on this anyway. Um, so that's going to have to kind of be dicked into everything. Um, so I don't, I don't think limiting things to, to no Sundays or. You know, limiting Saturday hours or something like that is going to have a huge effect. It might have some, but it wouldn't be um, necessarily a schedule buster.
That's all super helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, we would, we would agree with that also.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Um, Phil?
Thanks. I'm, I'm just going to drill down. I know it's very late. Um, I'd really like to drill very deeply into the mechanics pay in the driveway issue. That's clearly a major concern. Um, I heard numbers of three hundred to five hundred thousand dollar savings. Um, you know, uh, in comparison to costs of one point two million and others. Um. I, I'd really like to see something that justifies or substantiates any of that. The other issue is I, I'd be curious to see. What, what level of detail there is on, because um. I heard that Carby Street was, was dismissed pretty quickly and that struck me as, and I get the convenience. I get the opportunity. I don't. I, I'd love to be able to know a little bit more as to how much or the timing of maintenance as compared to, because I know in our last meeting. There was discussion that some maintenance must be offsite going over. I don't remember if it was to Dedham or where. Um, and some is going to be there. Obviously, having. That, you know, maintenance opportunity right there makes the convenience and everything else. But um, taking what was obviously a very robust uh, neighborhood discussion. I think that's something to drill into if we can. Uh, and I, you know. Just in my own mind, because I, I've just been to Carby Street often enough that I, I seem to think that that should be an opportunity, but um, if not. Um, I'm just going to echo a lot of the other comments. It's very late and this is, this is the primary issue. And then I guess of, just as a question is, is it worthwhile to make an approach to the full uh, funeral home? I, that, I was looking at a map during our meeting and I don't know if that's an opportunity to give some other. Um, access. So pose it as a question. That's all I have at this hour.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I know that it's late hour. Would you allow me to just chime in for one minute?
Absolutely, especially if you have an answer to any or all of that. That would be wonderful.
Any or all. Um, mostly I would say, I, you know, had a, a long conversation with our DPW Director, Chuck Fortune today. About the availability of space at Carby Street because. We do hear the butters' concerns here and wanting to take a look at what are all of the options available. And the concern is both with space on this property and um. Taking a look at like where duplicatation of surfaces are. I had a conversation with him and said, you know, is there space for the fire apparatus to be serviced? At Carby Street where you're servicing equipment. It's not ideal timeline wise for sure, exactly what you're saying, but it would be a space. But DPW Carby Street doesn't have the space to do their own mechanic work. Anything larger than a pickup truck has to be serviced offsite because they don't have the space to be able.
What's the availability and what's the level of scheduling? So if this is a once a month that the fire station needs it. And there needs to be an expansion of space. I think we need to, there was a very loud statement made by multiple people. And there needs to be an expansion of space. I think we need to, there was a very loud statement made by multiple people. And that's where even if we have no answer or the end, the, the end result of the answer is. We keep the existing maintenance bay and we, you know, we have to deal with the driveway issue. Um, but I think we need to give that more than just a, I spoke to the DPW kind of response. That's what I'm looking for in terms of drilling a little deeper.
I guess I, my question is, I spoke to the DBW director and they're saying to me. They cannot lift anything larger than a pickup truck on their site. What specifically are you looking for in addition?
Number one, I'd like to know how often is maintenance being anticipated? Number two, what type of maintenance? Is it, you know, informal maintenance, meaning of the ten thousand dollar variety? Are we talking offsite real significant, uh, maintenance? Is there an opportunity to minimize? Um, I'm, I'm not sure in terms of lift capabilities or not. But is there some opportunities at the DPW site? And I'm just using that as a next, as, as a, an example, um. Saying we have to, th- this is more of a, address the concerns of the neighbors as compared to saying it's not a concern. And that's where I think the, the, the concern of the neighbors is a lack of listening and that, that's where I think we should address it.
Thank you, Phil. I see a pile of hands up. Um, Mike Perkins has had his hand up for a minute.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I, I defer to, to Chief Lund, maybe if he wants to answer on the, on the, uh, matter of. Maintenance, uh, scheduling and, and need for that.
Thank you. Um, Chief Lund, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, if mechanic works twenty-four hours a week and he doesn't have enough time to get everything done. So he's working down there every single day. It's not. It's not something that it's only using once a month or there's constantly work being done.
Thank you.
Respectfully, you're saying that the maintenance bay would be essentially in use all the time.
The three days a week that he's there, yes.
Okay.
Whether it's changing tires or, or doing oil change or engine fives. The, the pump is being completely rebuilt right now. He's constantly being worked, being worked.
Is any of those, I mean, oil changes don't, I don't know, fire apparatus, uh, are those. Kinds of what I would say smaller services able to be done elsewhere. Um, as compared to when you need major service, which has to be done in Detlemore somewhere else.
So, so when you say elsewhere, do you mean outsourcing this to some place for two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for?
I don't know if the mechanic can, is able to drive to Carby Street or to somewhere else in town. What I'm trying to do is learn what needs to be done and see if there is an alternative or to educate myself in the others. And I know it's late. That's, I didn't expect to do this more than just like.
No, and, and, and I didn't mean to extend it. So you're trying, and I was just trying to anticipate what you're looking for. You're looking for. What work is routinely done on the fire apparatus? What is detailed in that work and where that work could be? And that is absolutely information that we can provide to you.
Okay, so my point is, how high of a priority is it to have the maintenance bay there? As, because particularly as it ties to the driveway, as we've already been talking about at length tonight. And therefore, if that is convenience versus need versus high priority, those are things that. Um, I just want to be able to assess from my own perspective and then be able to, you know, make sure that the. Residents are educated, the neighbors are educated on that point.
Okay.
That's, that's my, that's my only issue.
We can do that.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Perkins, you still had your hand up? Was there something you wanted to add or was that a legacy hand?
No, that, that's just going back to a couple of Phil's things, just, uh, this is very off the cuff. Shooting things out there. Um, I would anticipate if you were moving the maintenance bay offsite, you might add someplace between five and ten percent. For the cost of this building, if you're gonna include it in this project, just because you're pulling, you know, it might be five hundred grand. In, in this, this building right now, if you're pulling it offsite, then you're talking. Full HVAC system, standalone fire alarm systems, things of that nature that might not, you know. It's a, it's a garage, but it's gonna be its own standalone building and structure. If you were doing that at Carby Street or some other space offsite. Um, that would essentially put this on hold, uh, the FS one rebuild on hold until that maintenance bay is ready. Because you wouldn't be able to have this come online until that maintenance bay was, was ready and available.
Are there any offsets on what if the maintenance bay is not at FS one? And I do not want to put it on hold. Part of this is, is educating myself and the neighbors because this. Th- this seems to be a pretty hot button issue for that.
So I mean, offset, what do you mean by offset, Stevie?
So if the maintenance bay is not in the FS one on High Street. But you putting it, but just using it as a, a, you know, mythical Carby Street.
Yeah.
There, there, there must be some cost savings on the FS one construction that would occur, I assume.
They would be, but they, it would, it would be a net, uh, add.
A net add of five hundred, you're saying?
At least.
Okay, that, that's, see, that's more information than what I add.
Yeah, it would be a net add and then plus you, you know, if you find the, the perfect spot for it and things like that, you gotta get that done.
Understood all those issues.
Um, the elephant in the room regarding the road or the driveway or the cut through, whatever we wanna call it, is that it's not a road. Exactly. If, if, if you were gonna c- create this project with that as a roadway, quote unquote. Um, there's a lot of hurdles and hoops to, to go through, um, including, do you make that? Do you make that an actual right of way? Then it's, you're designing it to the town standards for, for a road. Um, then we're talking about drainage on that. Then we're talking about, are you putting a signal at that area for, for a light for traffic to then come out of there? God forbid, somebody comes out of there and tries to take a left when a fire engine is leaving the station. I mean, you, you open yourself up to a lot of things. By keeping that there.
And let me now explain my thought process.
Yep.
Because I completely agree with you and had already anticipated, partly because of all those hurdles. As an education process, that, that. Option is not a likely availability for any of us to really, to be able to do. I was already thinking of some of the other additional issues on that without actually partly because of the late hour, not having said that. Um, so I get that. I just. I think part of the frustration that I was hearing is people don't understand or know, or they haven't had the information and I can, and I, and I.
Right, and, and.
And I hear that concern.
Right, and my, my understanding or lack of understanding or ignorance of. When that driveway was in, was put in place, cause we all know it hasn't been there since day one. Um, and when it was started to be used as a relief valve, so to speak, for, for traffic in the area. And if it was just turned a blind eye for a number of years, and now it's become reliant upon for the, for the folks in the neighborhood. Um, it's kind of, you've got it now, so you, you can't take it away, um, kind of thing where it, it never should have been there to begin with and, and. For, for lack of a better way of saying it, I mean, by rights. What would happen tomorrow if the fire department decided that's where we're parking a truck? You know, is, is the town gonna say, I'm sorry, you can't do that? I don't think so, because it's not actually a roadway. It's, it's a part of that land. Um, similar to, I'm su- sure, and I don't wanna speak for him, but just my experience with different projects throughout town. And, and my own former life history, if you go to Folsom and say, hey, can we use your driveway as an access, please? They're gonna say either, sure, pay me a hundred grand a year and you can have an easement over my property or. Go pound sand. I don't want the liability and the increased traffic and that going through my property. Um, so I think, I, I think it's, it's, it's something that. Has been used for a long time, um, and has been dependent, uh, the, the, the neighborhood has become dependent upon it. But unfortunately, it's not, I mean, if it happened today, the town would be liable for, or potentially liable for. Whatever happened on that because it's town property and we're saying, yeah, it's okay for you to drive through here.
Maybe just as a suggestion, cause I, I hear you on all of that. Maybe because I, I was hearing choke point, I, I heard lots of stuff from neighbors. We, at the next meeting. Um, do a little bit more to educate the neighbors on the, these points. Because what you're saying now is very helpful even for me, but I appreciate it. It's very, very late. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Josh.
Are we trying to break for bio break, break or?
I, I'd be in favor of that, um, unless folks just wanna power through, but I'd be in favor of taking a three minute break if other folks.
Favor of that.
Second.
All right, uh, let me be formal. Uh, I would entertain a motion to, um. I guess adjourn for a three minute bio break reconvening at eleven oh four PM.
Second.
Kate.
I.
Sean. Uh, Josh.
I.
Phil.
I.
Vote I as well. We will be back in three minutes.
Joe, are you gonna keep this?
Looks like we have everybody from the planning board back. Um, let the record show, we have reconvened at eleven oh four PM. Someone remind me, do we need to take a vote on that? Or is, was it implicit in the motion when we adjourned briefly?
It doesn't hurt to reconvene.
All right, um, I'll call roll again. Uh, this, this meeting is now called back to order at eleven oh four PM. Josh.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
I'm also present. All right, our meeting is reconvene. Um, I left before I heard whether or not, did the select board adjourn? Do they need to reconvene?
So they're, they're still in session.
Thank you very much. All right, um, then we will take it up where we left off. Josh, you had the floor.
Yeah, um, so very much to Phil's point, um, you know, I heard a lot of discussion around the apparatus bay. Um, I, I do think that was more of a, a, almost a dog whistle for wanting that, um, pass through driveway. I mean, at the end of the day, I, I think it needs to be very clear that. That's not gonna continue. Um, I am actually a strong proponent of keeping the, um. The maintenance bay onsite. I don't think it makes any sense to move it anywhere else. The cost efficiency doesn't make any sense. That being said, I don't buy at all the fact that. The, the DPW couldn't support it. I think it's a very, uh, salient point. That it's not economical and it doesn't make sense. I'm totally supportive of that. But to say it's impossible because they don't have space, that doesn't make sense. We don't have the facilities there. That makes sense. And we have to build those facilities. That makes sense. So I, I like being very specific with, again, to Phil's. Point like the educate around it. Um, so that's one thing. Um. I'd like to understand, you know, we talked a, a lot about, um, pedestrian and, um, vehicular safety. Uh, with a, a potential OpEx cost associated with the project, uh, with a detail of at least one, maybe two police officers for the duration. I think we should really consider that in terms of the project in its entirety, cause that does add up. Um, I don't know if that's been considered or built into the. You know, town meeting proposal, um, but those are all costs that we need to incur and, and build into the budget. Um, cause it's gonna be overtime, it's gonna be detailed budget, right? Um, I do wanna understand the, the generator sizing, uh, as associated with the noise. It seems. Way oversized for what I would expect. Um, so I'd like to see something around the, you know, the power demand and expectations there. Um, I'm still not seeing anything associated with, um, any of the. Um, maintenance activities on the first floor in terms of, uh. Oil containment, linear drains down there. I still haven't seen any modifications of those plans. The more and more I'm hearing where it sounded like we're having lifts down there, more maintenance. So I think we should make sure that we address that in the design. Um, site logistics plan, one hundred percent, we need to build that into the bill, uh, bid and, you know, detail that out before with. You know, we sort of standardly do that anyways with the EIDR, but I think it might be a, a good, um. I don't wanna say olive branch, but a good way to formalize the expectation for the, the contractor and to support the, the neighborhood. Um. I think the SWIP is, uh, SWIP, sorry, I'm going back to my, my, my job. Um, the stormwater plan that you guys are, are generating, um, is really good. We'll need that. Um, I do think the screening, um, over by where those EV chargers, uh, is obviously needs to be addressed. Um, and maybe we could also look to, um, create additional stormwater controls to, to start, stop any additional runoff down there. I don't know if it's sort of necessary based off of the increases in your design, but some sort of swell or something down there might make sense. Uh, some sort of rain, rain garden. Again, I leave it totally up to you guys. You, you're the expert, but the screening over there, it seems to make a ton of sense. Um. Is there any possibility we can shift the parking back there to accommodate, uh, additional spacing for screening? I think is it something else we could sort of look at, just sort of a, a slight reconfiguration of that parking? Um. And I'm totally supportive of, of limiting the, the, uh, construction activities. Um, especially if we, uh, limit that to like deliveries on the weekends or Sunday. I think that still supports the project and, and still gets some relief for the, the rest of the neighborhood. And obviously a strong recommendation to address sort of these, um. Underlying concerns of pedestrian safety, traffic, um, to the select board, whether that is, you know, an addition of. A sidewalk and, you know, additional, you know, uh, pruning or expansion of some of the roads back there, whatever that looks like. But I, I think we do need to address that in parallel to this project, but we have to be very deliberate about, you know, doing that. So. That's it for.
Thank you, Josh. Kate?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'm sorry to double dip. I, I did just wanna say that I, I. You know, I appreciate that, that as this project was being developed, there was a list of, um. You know, what town resources, I'm sure that was reviewed and what the needs were for the, um, the fire station, uh, for. You know, everything that they provide. Um. In addition to that, I do agree, probably not just because they, they need the, the, um, bay, repair bay onsite. But I, I do think that when you have a, you know, when you have control over what's happening to your fire trucks. And the mechanic is looking the firefighters in the eye as he gives them the keys, like there is a real, um. There's a real accountability there that I think, um, if we can maintain, that would be very valuable for the town. Um, so I'm, I'm also supportive and I, and I, I do wonder if, um. One, you know, people are just trying to make the, the project be smaller, which I really appreciate, but I think it is as small as it can be. And still meet the needs of the town. Um, I, I know a lot of work and research has gone into the development of this plan. So I, I did just wanna say that out loud. Um. And Josh, I don't think you said about, uh, the meetings, if it could work for you either way, and I think Phil, we need your answer as well.
Yeah, I can make both the seventh and the twelfth, so I'm available.
I will not be happy about it, but I will make it work.
Thank you.
We'll end before midnight, just on your behalf.
I can make the seventh, um, on the twelfth, I will be in London, so I will be starting the meeting at. Twelve thirty or one AM the morning. I will do it for all of you and for this project, but, uh. Please be nice to me.
Well, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like the, and I could do either date, you know. Pending working something out with FinCom, but it sounds like that's not insurmountable. So whatever makes sense is fine by me. Um, were there, eh, oh, yes, Mike Perkins.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not trying to extend it. Chris will tell you otherwise. Um. Just to, a couple of things, um, to answer. I, I, I would just jot them down as you were saying, I'm just, uh, so like the oil water separator trench streams, those are all code requirements that, you know, obviously you're gonna be included in the MEP drawings. That's something that we're gonna have to review when it comes to that point. We just haven't, or the design team hasn't gotten to that level of design yet. It's obviously, it's going to have to be there. Um, as far as the electrical load on the building, and again, I. I don't wanna speak out of turn with the design team. I haven't seen all the counts yet, but. Uh, it's, one of, one of the things is one, it's an all electric building, you know, everything in there. And then just from my experience with the, with places, with the, with the police station in town, there's all, there's so many different little things that start to add up. I mean, even from like the motors on the garage doors, these aren't your regular old garage doors. They open in two seconds. You know, that's, it's not a twelve seconds slow motion type thing. So all that stuff tends to add up. And you start thinking about it as, you know, you've got three houses and an office building combined with an auto body shop. Essentially is what you've got in there. So I, I, I don't know what the KVA is exactly. I wouldn't be surprised if it's similar to the Pine Hill. Um, that thing, I don't know if you've been standing next to it when it runs. It's, it's quieter than my voice right now, just because of the, the muffler and the sound attenuation that's, that's installed in there. So it is. I don't wanna say silent, but you wouldn't know it's, it's a car idling at the, at the loudest. Um, I would think. And then as far as, eh, eh, shifted in the parking lot, I think there's a little bit of opportunity in there to try to move things around. Um, again, this right now. Kind of runs afoul of, of, of the setbacks, uh, for, for off-street parking. It would be another variance possible. kind of runs afoul of, of, of the setbacks, uh, for, for off-street parking. It would be another variance possibly to, to, to get a, uh, another side setback variance right now or in the back. Um, so it would be a little bit difficult. Um, and as was discussed during the public comment period, we're talking, you know, shift change. So you basically double the amount of parking spaces that you need there. And then if you've got recalls, if they've got storm or, or high volume calls or things like that, where you may have four or five other guys in there. So I don't think there's really an opportunity to delete parking necessarily. Um, I, if you, if you move green space around, maybe, I know that's not really a good, a good thing to substitute in there. Um, I, there might be ways to tweak it. Um, it would just be, there would have to be some give and take, I think, and on that, I, I'm not saying it's impossible. Um, I'm saying it would be difficult. There'd be trade-offs.
Yeah, for sure. I, I think that the main thing that I was trying to solve for is those E V parking spaces, um, expanding that green space so that we could put more, um, sort of not fencing, but separation between the neighborhood and, and the lighting and, and everything else.
So, so there are, there, there are two per building code, per, per the energy code requirements. There's two E V charging stations that are required to be there, as Nora was saying, uh, you know, it's expected to grow in years to come, but those aren't, uh, they're not enforceable reserve spaces. It's not like a handicap placard where you can be towed out of that spot. You don't have to be in the E V to be in there. So anybody can bark or park there if they want to. Um, it's not a reserved space. It's just, you've got the capability of somebody to park there, um, if they have a charger or if they need to charge.
Thank you. All right, uh, Sean, yes?
All right, I post bio breaking, hit a few more comments successfully now. So, uh, I think, let me do just landscaping and parking really quick, because that's, it's relevant to what we're talking about. Okay, so good to know about E V chargers under the code requirements. I actually think we need only one under our bylaw. So that's good to know. I was wondering if you might move, if it's, if it's not a big change, if you might move them closer to the door to prioritize the E V buildings and potentially give the handicap spot access to one of the E V chargers. But that's, um, that's, I, I'll leave you all to look at that. Um, I think some of the Josh, my, just my big concern there is, is the screening on that west side to, I, I think it was Paul's comments, like I want that screening as thick as possible. If we need to get a, a waiver from EverSource, because they're concerned about tree cutting or whatever, we will. But I think Nora's comments are correct about getting some conical trees in there that are gonna grow as tall as possible. Um, I do want to note on our, our, our regulations require that plans show information about the hu, the mature height of species and how fast they grow. I'd like to see that information on our next set of landscaping plans, so that we know exactly what we're looking at and how tall those trees are gonna be. Um, in addition, I, I don't think that all needs to be one species. In fact, I would prefer to see multiple different species back there to sort of layer it as much as possible. And hopefully the trees in the front can fill in some of the impervious gaps between the, the sort of trees in the back. So maybe in addition to like an eastern hemlock, you're doing a blend of cypress, holly in front, but make it look really natural and nice. I think the picture Paul showed us, showed us that there used to be something really natural there. I'd also like to see that tree, that kind of thick impervious tree buffer extended to the other side of the curb cut on the backside. So, uh, to kind of block, you know, create some space between thirty-three hill crest and the fire station. I don't know what's there right now, but I'd really like to see that as, as a courtesy to the residents back there. Again, as thick, as impervious and as natural looking as we can get it, and I think evergreen, uh, trees are gonna get you there. Um, yes, agree on the island shrubs, not grasses. Uh, on the south side mix, uh, where you are deciding whether to mix up the shrubs, I'd like to see it as mixed as possible. And, um, maybe I direct you to, to some of our, our town, um, planning staff's comments on that front. Uh, let's see, I, I think there are still maybe some gaps in terms of our landscaping requirements according to our bylaw on the east front and north sides. I'd like you all to continue to look at that in conjunction with our planning staff. Uh, it was just brought to my attention and I want to make sure that we've really been thoughtful about, given, given the size of the building, as we've mentioned, the landscaping, the screening should be as thoughtful as possible from all sides. Um, the dumpster enclosure, I echo Kate, I'd like to see eight feet high. Um, I know the dumpster's shorter than that right now, but in case you ever get a bigger enclosure and also, um, to block any potential sightlines from any homes, uh, at least eight feet high. Um, you, you've taken off the fence from the generator screening. I'd like to see some kind of a fence there. Maybe it has openings for where the doors are. Um, I know it's tough with the bollards. I'm thinking if you have a fence there, you don't need the bollards. Uh, would be my view, but I, maybe I leave that comment to you all to look at. Um, agree on the granite curbing. Um, trees, I think there are some comments about the transformer pad and it's possible interference with root systems, given that tree up front. I really want to make sure that that tree up front is preserved. So ask for some additional due diligence there. Um, I'm trying to think what else. Uh, the transformer pad, maybe, uh, the transform, I, it's something about making that black or galvanized. I think, again, there were some planning staff comments and I fully endorse anything that Nora has sent your way. Uh, can, can I be humored with a few more comments, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, back to just a few quick architectural things. There was a comment from an, a butter that this looks McMansion-y. I think this really needs a full pediment across the gable and an entablature underneath that pediment that just helps break up the vertical height of the building. I really strongly encourage you all to look at it. It can be, can have a contemporary flavor to it, but get the proportions right. Look at the buildings adjacent to get those proportions right. It can be, it can be something light, kind of off-white color. But I, I think you just need that to break up that sort of big forehead of brick and make it look a little less McMansion-y. Um, I would, let's see, the windows, um, I'm fine with the four over four. It looks nice. Um, I really like the window detailing to be kind of an off-white or a white, similar to the cornice lines on the roof. It's just gonna match better. Um, the bay doors, I know that there's a question about stretch code and what you can do with the bay doors, but I actually like the kind of open glass door look on the, on the fire bay apparatus doors. And I think it lets more light into the apparatus bay and better for the mental health of our firefighters. It's better for working conditions, un, unless the fire staff disagree with that. I, I don't know what they prefer, but there's any way we can accommodate it. I'd love to see it. That said, I really want to see red trim on it. I think that's, uh, that's something I've had many residents comment to me about, and it's something they liked about the early designs. I know that, I know that there are some fire staff who have a differing view, but that's, it's kind of classic firehouse to me and it really speaks to the use of the space. Um, there's any way you can spruce up the front entrance and make it look a little less corporate. I appreciate it. My one idea today was if you're, have that smaller town seal from the current fire station, maybe you can put it right over, like, kind of underneath the, the awning or the hood. Kind of put it over the, over the, the public entrance door. I think that would be a really fitting spot for it, if it fits there well. Uh, where else am I going? Um, the banding looks really nice. Thanks for doing that with the precast concrete. Um, there's a gray color right now and I'm curious about that versus the more warmer color that's on the police station in town hall, which I might have a preference for, but I don't know what other board members think on that front. Um, or there might be a compelling reason to go with more of a gray and I'm happy to hear Doris' comments on that, whether here or take it back and bring it at our next meeting or, um, whatever works best. I've covered a lot here. Um, I would just consider on the south side of the building, if this might be a little exotic, but adding some ivy that might creep up the building and just break up the size of that brick mass and be a little more favorable to the Folsom Funeral Home and the folks who are looking out the windows from that towards the north, it might feel a little more, uh, parochial to have something that's a little more vegetative, especially given the fact that you don't have enough space to accommodate trees there. So I don't know enough about landscaping to say whether that's even feasible. I have seen plenty of ivy-covered brick buildings in New England, but I leave that to you to look at. Um, screen the electric box with shrubs as well. On the lighting plan, I saw a discrepancy between the number of sea lights on the front side and the number that was showing up on the elevation. I like, I, I don't know if, I was confused about something. I really like those lights on the wall on the front side of the elevation. And I like that there, there's one between every single bay. Um, I agree that as much as you can reduce the lighting, um, like the lights along the street, if you can take it down to two or even, or one, if you only need one, whatever it is, that's great. Likewise, back parking lot, if we can like shut lights off at ten P M. Um, and I hope the screening will help as well, but I just want to make sure we don't have light glaring into people's residences. And I'm not sure you have a need for it after ten P M. Unless you come and really tell us otherwise. Uh, sustainability front, I know that the plan you're proposing right now has a potential for twenty-five percent capacity under renewable energy. Um, you'll need to abide by the fifty percent rule in our bylaw unless you request a waiver. I'd like to see a plan that, uh, has a plan for getting to fifty percent within, um, five years. Uh, let's see, I think, uh, stormwater, um, if you do the math in a seventy-year period, there's close to a one in five chance that a five-hundred-year storm happens. As much capacity as we can get out of that stormwater system, especially because this is an emergency operations building, would be very much appreciated. And FEMA's own guidelines for critical safety, uh, for critical facilities, which includes safety facilities like fire and police, suggest building them for five-hundred-year storms. Um, and so it, it, as much as we can do towards that end, it's, it's a matter of safety in this town. And I know that stormwater is an increasing issue that residents are coming to us about, including many of the residents on this call tonight. And those are everything I have. Thank you so much. Um, I appreciate it and look forward to some of the responses and sorry to give you a lot of homework to do.
Thank you, Sean. Um, were there any other comments? I see Mike Perkins hand up. Yes, Mike?
Just to answer like real quick, I, I got four of those things that I can answer, Sean.
That's Mike. I love your answers. You're doing.
Pretty, pretty well right now. The generator enclosure, um, without the fence in front of it, the enclosure itself is just a gray box. Um, it, it, it's, it basically looks like a Conex box. It's, it, to be honest with you, it looks better than any fence that's gonna be in there, because you're still gonna see the structure above it anyway. Um, I think it's, if it's the same one that's at Pine Hill, you can't even tell what it is. It just looks like a gray box structure. Um, it doesn't even have like a smokestack coming out of it. Um, the glass doors, everybody's in favor of those. Based on the energy code requirements right now, it's gonna be really tough to make those work, just because the air infiltration on that style of door is, is a lot greater than it is on a, on a traditional like hard panel style of door. So I know that the design team is working on the, the energy model and if there is availability to do that, that's something that everybody has spoken about, trying to get as much glass and as much light into those bays as possible. Um, the ivy on the walls, we've discussed that in the working group in the past, two concerns, well, one concern, it does tend to damage the masonry over time. You get root infiltration, things like that. We did discuss doing like a, like a living wall type thing where you build a frame in front of it. You plant the ivy and it grows up that, but what that is, it gets quite expensive. Um, so again, it's a, it's a trade-off of, do you want to build a thirty-foot galvanized fence for the, for the ivy to climb? It's gonna look pretty ugly for the first ten years, but after that it works. Um, and then as far as, uh, screening transformers, um, typically not really allowed per, uh, EverSource and, and, and required clearances, things like that around transformers. You see it a lot, but it's usually done after the fact. Um, and EverSource doesn't know about it until they get there and then they cut them down. Um, so it's typically something that you don't do right away, um, simply because you've got to get some access to there at some point in time.
Okay, I'm popped up one more question on the screening front that I missed. Um, if there's a way to fit, I know the bike racks going in there, because the backside of that maintenance bay has no windows on it, it's just kind of plain brick. If there's a way to get like a small ornamental tree in there or something, just in front of that, uh, I would, I would love you for it. Um, on the, on the transformer thing, totally hear you if, um, I, that's all fine. Thanks for the responses and all of that. That's good to know.
Thank you. Uh, were there any other questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any. I have a couple. Much of what I wanted to say has already been addressed, so that will speed things up. Um, I agree about the granite curbing. I'm not really in favor of concrete. Um, I also echo the, the white or off-white trim on the windows and the red doors. Um, I would also put in a plug. I, I still would like to see both, I like the banding. I'd like to see the banding and the stonework at the base of the building extend around the training tower. I personally think it looks odd to have that gap, so I'd like to see it extended and just get a sense of what that would look like. Um, I sent a note earlier. I'm not sure if you received it. The tough dig grass that you chose to replace the blue grandma, I think it was, is actually a species that's not native to this country. So I suggested a couple that would be native, uh, different, same family, different species within that family that would be native to Massachusetts. So I'd like to see one of those chosen instead. Um, I also am looking forward to seeing the noise study and the stormwater management studies. Those two are important to me. Um, and then two quick questions, or maybe one quick question. Um, the bollards, can you tell me a little bit? I'm not a bollard expert. Are those hollow? Are they solid?
They're, they're concrete filled. They're usually, I'm sorry, Don, if you want to take this one, it's usually a six-inch, six-inch steel pipe, concrete filled, goes into the ground, four-foot footing. Got a little nice little rounded concrete top to the top of it. Paint it whatever color you want, or you can put PVC sleeves over the top of it.
Okay.
Those usually get damaged and thrown away in a year.
Understood. Okay, that's helpful. And, um, I also would not be thrilled about the safety yellow, so I'd like to see a different proposal for that. And I'm just looking at my notes very quickly. I guess the only other comment I would make is what's already been said about, I don't think we can overstate from my perspective how important the screening, the trees are going to be. I think getting that right is gonna be incredibly impactful. Seeing the photos of what was there before the original trees were removed and what's there now. In my opinion, the current screening is far from sufficient, so I think we can do better. Um, and I support everything Nora said about advising you there. Um, and I guess my one other comment on stormwater, and I say this to every applicant. I understand that the fire station isn't necessarily responsible for the problems, but if there are things that can be baked into your planning and the stormwater system you're proposing that can actually improve and not, not just offset your own impact, but improve what's there now outside of what the town may be able to do, if there's any way to address that within the project, I think that would be a nice thing to do. And that is all I have. So thank you, everyone. Um, so with that, oh, I do see there is, do I see a hand raised? I'm sorry. I'm scrolling quickly. I thought I saw a panelist hand raised. Was someone looking to speak?
I was.
Yeah.
I just want to answer Sean that, um, and the chief can answer this better, but, uh, the firefighters have picked out a pretty nice-looking uh, medallion, a shield to go on the back of that service bay there. Um, but as we get closer, they can talk about that, but they, they already have their eye on that location for putting something special up from the, from the fire insignia.
Where is that?
On the back, where you suggested the tree to hide the, uh, back of the.
Oh, there's something to go there. That's.
Oh, they, yeah, they, not, not a little thing. It's a big thing. It's gonna look nice.
If there's something special for them and it's kind of fun and classic looking, all for it. Joe, I, um, I thought that was just gonna be br, blank brick wall. I was gonna be appalled, but I, I actually love that idea. So I fully endorse. I also endorse putting trees in many places, but they should show off. I appreciate that. So thank you. I didn't know that. That's a fun surprise. And I also want to say thank you to everyone on the signs. I'm very excited for, for, for the signs, uh, that the firefighters are thinking about, and hopefully we can see some sort of concept or idea of that, even if it's not exactly what we get. Just an idea of what, what, what that's gonna look like will be helpful.
Thank you. That's helpful information. All right, um, if there were no further comments from board members or staff, I, I do see something in the Q and A. I know we closed public comment, but I, I think we should recognize that since I have seen it, uh, and I'm happy to read it. Um, Paul DeMayo, I know we have his address from earlier. Is that sufficient? Can we just pull it? Thank you. Uh, his comment is, it's about minimizing the size of the building. Nobody cuts through. This is fiction. It is not used as a cut-through. And I, I think that he wrote that at eleven o'clock, so that was an earlier point in the conversation, but, uh, thank you, Mr. DeMayo.
Thank you, Chief, has a comment.
Yes, I see both Josh and Chief Lund's hands up. I'll start with Chief Lund.
I don't want to be confrontational, but I've, people cut through there every day, multiple times. I've almost been hit there. They've run over our hose while we're training. People use it all the time. So.
Thank you.
And we get heard from some of the, the individuals who spoke today, saying that they feel uncomfortable only having one exit out of the neighborhood. So yes, uh, I understand the, it's a two-fold ask, right? Like minimizing the size of the building. I'm assuming that also has something to do with the desire to, to minimize the, the budgetary impact. I'm assuming that also has something to do with the desire to to minimize the the budgetary impact there. But like, we can't force that. Like, I'm trusting uh Chief Lund and the rest of the town to to identify like need for future. And like my worst thing um that I see is like planning for right now instead of the future. So they could be very short sighted to just build exactly what we need for today. Um so I I'm not going to comment on on what we need. I'm going to comment on what we have in front of us, making sure that like it's fit for purpose, it meets our bylaws. Um the 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 financial component, like the the town will get to speak at town meeting around that. Um that's up to all of us to present value there and, you know, get a vote, positive vote there. But um yeah, uh I I think we heard from specifically from people today that it is used for a cut through and there there are multiple things at play here, so maybe it wasn't this individual's perspective and and need to to really address with the the maintenance bay, but it it is other people's comment, so.
Thank you. All right, um if there's no other discussion, I guess it would be time for the planning board to decide how they want to proceed with picking a date for our next meeting so that we can then take a motion to continue our public hearing. What is the consensus?
Sean. I like uh Patty her town council's comment on let's go for the seventh. And then if we know in a few days that we won't have uh plans by then, we can have a quick meeting and continue it to the twelfth.
I'm amenable to that unless the the design team really feels that that is just not achievable. Um I think it's worth trying.
I agree.
Don, did I see you raise your hand?
Yes, I did my my real.
Real hand, yes.
Um we'll we'll make every effort to achieve this for the seventh. I I think what's really important. There was just a lot of stuff thrown on here after uh eleven o'clock bio break. So we're we've been taking notes and we'll compile our notes. But if there's a way to know exactly what you're looking for, I think that would help us in in framing this so we can get you the responses that you request.
I think that's exactly my point from earlier, right? Like, what do we need them to provide for the seventh? I'm hearing stormwater. I'm I'm hearing changes to the the planting and and ensuring screening. Um like, is there four or five things that we can say definitively by the seventh you need to provide so we can move this forward?
It's but my view, it's the required plans that that Nora can hopefully be helpful here as well. It's the required plans. It's everything that we actually need to endorse the plan. So it's that sustainability piece. It's the plan to get to fifty percent unless.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, uh the the updated traffic study. Um I might leave the others to Nora. I would say um, Don, my views, if it's helpful is if it's if it's a little like facade thing or maybe some elements of the landscaping, we might be able to write a really solid condition that we put in. And that way, if it if that something's going to take some time to figure out on the actual plan. Um I don't, I don't want to make things that are are super difficult to do in a really crunch timeline. So Nora, what does Nora have a perspective? I don't know if you.
Yeah, I I think it's the site plan, this the stormwater management report, the traffic report, the sustainability uh memo or analysis. And landscaping plan, I think, has to be a final plan. You can always amend it if you run into problems down the line, but I think you need a solid plan. So those are the five things I think that have to be done.
I'm sorry, I can't like I can't write that fast. I know other people are.
Site plan, stormwater. Stormwater, sustainability, traffic report and.
And landscaping plan.
Landscape.
Yes, and then we can revise the the photometric plan and um drawing a blank. There was something else that we were going to come back with later.
Probably the noise.
Noise, no, for it. Yes, they can can come later.
Madam Chair. Always thing come later.
Yes.
That's that was the one of the whole that was the.
Don't have them. So what the board will do then is they will address both of those in conditions.
Okay, and I heard someone looking for me. I didn't catch the voice. Ah, thank you. Chris Coleman, yes.
So, Don, I just want to be clear what we're talking about for the seventh is the meeting of the seventh. The information will need to be submitted by November fourth.
Absolutely. Yep.
For the excuse me, for the planning work package, apologies.
Thank you for clarifying that, just so that we're all on the same page. Thank you. Um I I am happy to to set the meeting date for the seventh and and proceed. You know, if we know by the fourth that for some reason we don't have the materials we need, we can meet briefly, open the meeting, continue it. Um but I think it would be, you know, process wise, I I think it would be better to meet on the seventh if we can. Um so if all board members are amenable to that, I would entertain a motion. Do we have a written motion for this? We do. Thank you.
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for consideration of EIDR approval of the new fire station one at six thirty seven High Street as described in the application therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on August twenty second uh twenty twenty four to Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four at seven thirty P M via Zoom. Where a Zoom link and associated caller numbers will be provided on the town calendar, uh the town's calendar on the homepage at westwoodma.gov.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll take roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. The public hearing is continued. Thank you, everyone. I know this was a very long conversation, but I think it was very productive and necessary. Um select board, do you need to adjourn your meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Um.
Okay.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending and sticking it out with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great discussion.
Thank you. All right. Um and I'm glad we were able to get a date on the calendar prior to the ZBA hearing. All right, um our next agenda item was agenda item number two, continuation of twenty twenty comprehensive plan implementation updates, Fire and DPW. Um.
I believe Chief Lund, but we lost um Todd Corchen, so I don't know if this is something you want to take up at the next meeting or if you want to go ahead.
Um that well, the meeting after the seventh, right? Not our next regular meeting.
Regular meeting on November nineteenth.
I think um clearly we would need to push DPW. Chief Lund, I know it's very late. I am, I I want to be respectful of of your time, but also I know you prepared to present tonight. Would you be amenable to deferring this discussion?
Absolutely, whatever uh whatever works best for you.
I'm just thinking it it might be best um to continue both DPW and Fire to when is our next regular meeting, the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
If that if that works for your schedule, I think that would be the right call.
That's fine with me.
Thank you very much.
And maybe we could hit it first on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I would. I think that would be a good idea. Schedule.
I think respectful of this time, I think.
Exactly.
Chief Lund, thank you so much for your patience on this.
Thank you.
Even time block like just thirty minutes for it and do both of them. That way, like other applicants know that we really won't get started with them until thirty after, but we've got the time with the chief. We've got the time with Todd. I think that would be helpful.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and that way Chief and and Todd don't have to stay for the entire meeting if they choose not to, and we've level set with other applicants. All right, um. Do I need to make a motion for that or do I need to take a motion for that? Okay, it's not. It's just an agenda item, right? Thank you. All right, so next item would be um item number three, discussion of potential planning board design guidelines for environmental impact and design review and or special permit applications. Sean, I'm going to ask you the same question. I I want to be respectful of the time you've put into preparing, but given the hour, would you be amenable to deferring this discussion?
I'm amenable to deferring it. You know, it's something I've discussed. No, I haven't discussed the deferral, but I've discussed this process and proposal with Elijah and with Nora and with our our planning staff. So if they feel there's a compelling reason to proceed with it on an earlier timeline, I'll I'll defer to them. But if we think we can give it a more robust discussion later, I I'd like to have the time with the board when we're all not too tired.
Right. Um staff?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, all right, then. Um if everyone's amenable, I'd like to defer that item. I guess if if the schedule allows, I think the nineteenth, I don't want to keep kicking that down the road because I know, Sean, you've put a lot of work into preparing for this.
I think we do. It's a process that we would want to get going on and we can kickstart it when we want to kickstart it. It's just a matter of when we say go. So the early we can talk about it. We can, we can, if if the board would like to do something like that, we can get it going, but.
Okay, but let's let's throw um tentatively say the nineteenth, depending on, I have no idea what the rest of the agenda looks like. But let's aim for the nineteenth for that as well. So then our next agenda item would be item number four, discussion of potential warrant articles for the May twenty twenty five town meeting. And I believe we have, if he's still with us, uh Dan Bailey. Yes, looks like he is still there. I know we have a couple of items under that to talk about, but I think we should start with the Lambert's Plaza.
Hi, um. Uh, am I on now?
You are. Welcome and and thank you for your patience. I know it's quite late and I appreciate you staying.
Uh and yeah, this is why I tell Mike managing partner, I'm going to retire soon. Uh. I was, you know, the Stoneham Conservation Commission until, I don't know, ten fifteen or ten thirty last night. Uh but anyway, eh you know, uh I appreciate it. You know, um we were here the last time to talk about Lambert's Plaza and a potential rezoning from the existing residential zoning district to highway business. Um I submitted a um a proposed zoning amendment. It's a simple, relatively simple map amendment, and I sent it into Nora I don't know, week, ten days ago. Uh proposing to, you know, very simply amend the zoning map, no amendment to the zoning by law, and it would be an amendment of the zoning map uh to uh change the zoning from residential to highway business. Uh we would hope that this uh planning board would support that. Uh you know, my clients are not on tonight. I I think they were earlier, but they may have faded. Um I know that they have talked with at least one or two people in the neighborhood. Uh and you know, they've done some uh preliminary uh outreach. They intend to do considerably more. Uh they understand that this has been a controversial issue in the past. Uh you know, I can remember being at town meetings where this was a controversial issue. Uh but really what Lambert's uh Charles River Realty, the current owner would like to do would like to see this zoned as highway business, subject to the usual highway business requirements, whether it be special permit or site plan review for improvements. But uh they feel pretty strongly that if it got converted from residential to highway business, they would be in a much better position to be able to attract better tenants. Um they've got a long term lease with Lambert's and Lambert's isn't going anywhere as as well as Dunkin' Donuts. But you know, the, you know, they've had trouble retaining good tenants otherwise. Uh and if it was rezoned, then our expectation is that we would come in with an application for, you know, a redevelopment of the site. Um you know, to uh yeah, deal with, you know, it's a challenging site, you know, the 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 way the traffic works is nuts. Um where you have to drive around the building really to get back out on Route One, we'd want to fix that. Um we, you know, to, I don't want to bury the lead here, but you know, we would want to try and do uh upgrades so we could do drive throughs. And of course, those are always subject to special permitting. Uh so it it's not that, you know, we're asking for less review on that. Um but we would like the ability to be able to do that. It's very difficult to come in and propose a drive through on a parcel on Route One that is residentially zoned. So you know, that's what they're looking at. They they, you know, they want to work with the neighborhood. Uh there's been a lot of friction there in the past. Uh they understand that. It's a new owner. They want to try and you redesign this so that it would have less of an impact on the neighborhood, but still all subject to, you know, review and approval by the planning board. I I guess, you know, in certain instances by the ZBA on on drive throughs. Uh so you know, that's where we are, you know, on the hunt and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Um do we have the, can we just briefly project the the language that was proposed? Just so that we can all kind of take a look at it together? I found it quite straightforward, but I'm I'm happy for staff.
Or do you have that? I I I I don't have it handy.
I should be able to find it. Amanda, you don't have it?
I got it.
Thank you.
I have it up to it.
Yeah, so what we did here is, you know, the the first piece of it is just a general, here's what we are requesting. Certain parcel land on Providence Highway, and we referenced the assessors map and parcel number, which is typically the way that uh map rezonings come to uh town meeting. And we're requesting that go from single residence B to highway business. Uh that parcel is also in the Mumford District One. You know, we're not, it it, you know, we we don't aren't really looking at looking at the Mumford District One. You know, we understand that there's the ability to do some residential there, but that's not what my client wants to do. They really are much more focused on retail. And then there's a a draft warrant article that is attached to that. Yeah, you just scroll down. So what we're saying here is very simply, it's a it's a zoning by law. It's really a zoning map amendment. Um and the starred parcel there is the Lambert's parcel uh on Route One, and we are only proposing the reason on that. Uh again, from residential to highway business.
Thank you. Um did did staff have any thoughts they wanted to share on this language and this proposal?
I think it's very similar to the language we've used for other rezonings. I will just check it, you know, before it goes through. This is certainly sufficient to go to the a request if the plane board wants to sponsor this. This is sufficient to send to the select board to ask to have a reserve warrant article for this. Um we will pop in the proposed zoning map. That'll uh come from our GIS specialist and then that it should be ready to go.
Excellent.
Yeah, and if you needed any other information regarding, if you want to meet mom's description or more detail, we'd have to give that to you. But that's not typically what, you know, uh towns look for when they're amending the zoning map. They, you know, you you work with GIS folks and and that's sufficient.
Thank you. Um I'll open it up to uh any questions or comments from board members at this time.
I thought it was straightforward. I had no comments.
Thank you. Sean?
I was just going to say that I'm supportive of it. I it's, this isn't anything that would change the language of it. It's, I, you know, Dan, I think you're fully aware of the history of this at town meeting. I was even, I was doing my own on unrelated things. I was doing my own research through old Fincom warrant books in in the library over the weekend. And I was surprised at the number of times this came up and uh over the years and hadn't quite worked. So um if you've, you know, I uh hopefully you all are anticipating the issues and planning for that and.
But yeah, we know we need to work with the neighborhood on this.
I think you get that, so.
Yeah, you know, I I was at the town meeting ten, twelve years. Yeah, you know, I I was at the town meeting ten, twelve years ago. Uh, where there was an attempt to rezone this and, you know, there was. A very strong neighborhood outcry against it and it failed. So we get that. We need to do some some outreach and some work with the neighborhood and explain why this is a, uh. Is beneficial.
Um, yeah, no, uh, fully agree, and I recognize, I think the one thing is. So the rear setback on the highway business. Zoning is is going to be smaller than I think the, uh. Single residence zoning, so hopefully that's a. I see no problem with that because most of this is just backing up to open space and wetland and. That's good. You can you can hopefully. Do more with the site and bring it to its highest and best use. I recognize why you might have kind of the resident on the north end of that site. Um, concerned, so I think. As as long as you think about the narrative in a compelling way and. Um, hopefully we can talk to it as well from a planning board perspective. I I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see good tenants in here and. And some revitalization of. You know, if if, I mean, it's not that we have bad tenants. Yeah. Uh, but. I'd like to see your ability to get tenants be unhindered.
Yeah, yeah, it it's, I mean, you know, I was talking with my client today and they've got a couple of tenants that are interested, but. They really need to see more. Yeah, a a little firmer situation with zone, you know, they, look, I. Usually, you know, I I represent tenants and developers and. They're never real happy with non-conforming zoning situations, even if it's legal. And this, I think, would give us an opportunity to really upgrade the the quality of the tenant mix there. But I also want to be clear, you know, just so people understand, you know. Lambert's is there. There, I don't think they're going anywhere. They've got a lease and, you know, that's a, you know, uh. Uh, a use in a a business that I think people really like to have there.
Thank you. Uh, were there any other questions or comments from board members?
Nothing.
Thank you. Yeah, I I found it to be quite straightforward, um, and and I understand the challenges that the tenants, that the owner is facing with, um, the zoning as it is. Um, and this seems like a logical thing to do. Um, Nora. What action, if any, do we need to take this evening?
So you don't have to take any. You can, uh, add this, you could give a sense that you are interested in sponsoring this and that your next meeting on November nineteenth will be asking your. Second meeting, your regular meeting on November nineteenth, we will be asking you to, uh, vote on all of the articles that you want to request. To, uh, select board to allow you to sponsor. So you want to request or warn articles for a specific number of articles? We've discussed some of them before. We'll go through all of them with draft language of the others on November nineteenth, and you can vote at that time. But it it might be helpful to Dan and to his client if you could, um, take a sense of the board and all. Indicate whether you're interested in sponsoring this or not.
I think that's reasonable. So would I just kind of poll each board member and get a sense of, all right, uh. Phil, you've already stated, but I will ask you formally, um. For what is your sense, uh, your inclination towards this article?
I would recommend it.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Okay, Kate.
I would recommend.
Thank you, Sean.
I would recommend it.
Thank you, and I'm supportive as well. So all right.
On the nineteenth.
Thank you very much.
Will we come in in just under the wire, just before bidley?
Oh, my goodness.
Way good. The enforcement proceeding I did last night.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your for your patience as well.
No, I I. I, you know. As many of you know, I've been, and Nora knows, I've been on your side of this many times, um, and, you know, it's the public process and, you know. Uh, I think, yeah, years ago, when you were doing University Station project and there was some. Discussion about whether to put a fire station down there. Uh, Chief Scoble said the hardest thing to do is put a new station in the neighborhood and the hardest, second hardest thing to do is to change a station in the neighborhood, so. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not Fisher.
It's interesting. Um. So yes, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Uh. All right, Nora. I know we had a few other warrant article items that were on the agenda. Does staff wish to discuss them or defer them?
So I don't think staff has anything to discuss on any of them. We discussed them all last time, so we don't have any changes. We'll propose the actual language or the draft language on the nineteenth. Um, and then ask you to vote at that time. And so unless there's a new article that. We haven't discussed before or any article that you'd like to withdraw from consideration, we don't. We don't have any need for a discussion.
Okay, um, then I'll put it to board members. Were there any additional proposals for articles that anyone had or anything that they felt we should withdraw, in which case we should discuss it now? Or if not, um, we can table this conversation till the nineteenth.
I I just have a quick question about the. The speed limit discussion. We had talked about. Requesting the select board to take that up. Where where are we falling with that? Are we creating draft language and asking them to endorse it? Or?
Yeah, so if the board is interested in making that recommendation to the select board. We will also develop a draft bylaw that would, you would forward to the select board. The main bylaws that the planning board wants to sponsor, you're forward asking for a reserve warrant article for those. And that other article that you're recommending the select board sponsor wouldn't request an article, a, a. A warrant article, what you would do is just recommend they consider sponsoring that on their own.
I would be agreeable on the speed article. Also.
Agree.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'd be interested in making a recommendation as well.
Yeah, I mean. I'm interested in making a recommendation, I'm. But that being said, I'm I'm more interested in. Having the town vote on it. Um, so I'd like to. Maybe talk to any of the select board members and see. Uh, engage their interest on on that, and if they're not interested, um, I'd be interested in pushing it ourselves and or I will do it individually. Um, and see where that goes. So, um, yeah. I don't know what this path forward for that is. I guess it may be a little bit informal, but. Um. I'd like like any type of guidance from you on that.
So you, your, uh, timing, the the warrant opens at the, uh, first select board's first meeting in December and closes at their first meeting in January. So if you were to. Present the articles you're requesting for a reserve warrant article. We will get those to the select board by their first meeting in December, and if we recommend, send the recommendation for the speed article at the same time and ask the select board. To let us know if it's something they're interested in, we'd ask them to respond in time for. If they're not interested in pursuing it, in time for either this board to request. An additional warrant article for January, if you, if the majority of board members want to do that, or for you, Josh, to prepare a petition article. Using the language that we'll have ready. It's just a matter of then you would have to go out and get ten signatures if the select board, if the planning board did not want to. Sponsor an article. Ask you for a speed limit when the select board was opposed to it, so.
Yep, makes sense.
You could. It's a petition article.
Josh, I'd join in on that.
Hey, good Friday, people.
I. Got one right here. I'll let you.
Yeah.
Um. Uh. Can I make one quick note? I think. Um, I I at least like to have the discussion on the nineteenth about the scenic road stuff that we mentioned last time, uh, mayor, you know, but. We'll get, we'll get sort of a sense of the board. Um. I I'm. Curious to pursue it or at least have the discussion, and I just didn't see it on the list for the. Summary for, which is why I wanted to bring it up again. I just wanted to make sure.
We missed it. It's there. It's on, it's on my, uh, list on my phone notes. It didn't make it into the report of that. That's my fault.
No, no, it's, we are swimming in details these days. Uh, I applaud you all. Um, and then. Finally, it's just just a thought. I know that, um. Staff puts a significant amount of time and work into drafting this. Um. I don't know if we are. Allowed to consider the role of a non-quorum of planning board members and. Um, supporting the drafting of an individual article, and I think about things that might. Feel a little more. Complex, like a tree canopy article. I, we. Can maybe discuss it at the next meeting, and I I look to your guidance on. How involved members should be or not, but it it was a thought I had over the weekend if. There if there are given articles where. You know, say two members are really interested in. Kind of taking the lead. I don't know if it's something that can be done under open meeting law, but I I'd like. I'd like to at least hear what our options are.
Right, so if you if you form a committee, a subcommittee of two members to do anything, even if you say it's an informal subcommittee, it's subject to open meeting law. Any one of you can do anything you want. On your own, and any one of you can work with staff on drafting articles, but once there are two of you, that can only be done in an open meeting process.
I'm I'm sorry, my ignorance around that. I thought it was a quorum, not two.
Not for subcommittee. For subcommittee, it's any, any subcommittee that's formed, even if it's less than a quorum requires.
Subcommittee, gotcha.
So if anyone has particular interest in a particular article, just let staff know and we'll work with you on the drafting.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, um, any further discussion at this time about potential warrant articles? All right. Um, then our next agenda item would be, um, the calendar. I believe we have to finish finalizing our meeting schedule for twenty twenty five.
If you can, but it's late. I'm okay if you put that off until November. We we're good through March and. If you want to wait on the rest, we'll wait.
Okay, um, I I think that would be a good idea, unless any board members feel strongly about having the calendar discussion this evening. I'm not seeing anyone feeling strongly, so, um, if if everyone's amenable, let's table that. Um, next agenda item, minutes, minutes. From review draft minutes from October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes and did anyone have any suggestions or edits?
None for me. They look good.
All right, if no one has any, uh, comments or changes to propose, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board approve the minutes for the meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty four is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Sean.
Right.
Phil.
Right.
Josh.
I.
Kate.
I.
Vote I as well. Motion carries. Minutes are accepted. Next agenda item, updates from agency and committee representatives. Any, anyone attend any meetings that they would like to report out on?
Um, I recently went to a ped bike advisory committee meeting. Uh, it was about the Canton Street sidewalks specifically. Um, there was discussion, there were, there was a, um. A vote to, uh, support the project moving forward at the end of the discussion.
Thank you. And speaking of Canton Street, uh, project working group, our meeting got. Canceled and I still haven't gotten a rescheduled date, but I think they were talking about. Early November, um, so. I will report back when I have more information, but I have nothing new to say on that, so, uh, TB, TBC, to be continued.
Um, and the same thing, sorry to interrupt you, Ellen, the same thing for, um. The dog, whatever it's called that I'm on, uh, we're scheduling our second meeting, which is going to be in November.
Excellent. I'm looking forward to hearing more about that, um.
I want details of the dog, whatever.
Yes. All right, anyone else attend any meetings or have any agency reports to share? All right, um, then our next agenda item is general miscellaneous updates and administrative items.
None.
None? All right, um, nothing from staff. All right, um, then I will just share that our upcoming board meetings are, well, we have scheduled one for November seventh, twenty twenty four. Um, then we have a regular meeting on November nineteenth, twenty twenty four, December tenth, twenty twenty four, and January seventh, twenty twenty five. Also a note. That the Finance and Warrant Commission Article Sponsors Meeting will be on January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, with that, if no one has anything else. I would entertain a motion.
Sorry, I do want to say Happy Halloween. Motion close.
Happy Halloween.
I also said motion to close.
Oh, yeah, second.
Oh, sorry, it's tomorrow. Halloween's tomorrow, sorry.
Right, um, all right. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Kate.
I.
Uh, Sean?
Bye.
Josh?
I.
Phil?
I.
Vote I as well. Thank you, everyone, for a long but very productive meeting this evening.
Thank you, staff.
Yeah.